We will call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Here.
Mr. McCall?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Bouye?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here. We will stand and we will ask Councilmember, Mayor Protem, Chris Mills, to lead us in the flag salute.
Ready. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no presentations this evening. Report on posting of the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you had before you must post in accordance with the Robin Brown Act for adjourned meetings.
The Housing Authority, the Industrial Development Authority, the Financing Authority, and Community Redevelopment Authority have no business this evening, and we will open the floor for public comments at this time, three-minute limit per person on matters within the jurisdiction of the council. If anyone would like to speak in public comments, please come forward at this time. Good evening and welcome. Please give your name to the clerk.
Good evening. Jim Stewart. Address is on record. I'm here to, with my travel schedule, you never know when I'm going to be here, so I want to go on record as a member, as a resident of the movie colony. Within a couple blocks of Section 14, we are very supportive of what the Indians' tribe wants to build. However, they should be able to build whatever they want, she would agree. My biggest complaint, and my biggest concern, and anything I would recommend to this council, any agreements that...
Is your mic on?
Green light?
A little green light.
It looks like it's on.
Well, it'll be very bright now.
Oh, now it's on. Well, you heard me anyway. I'm loud anyway.
Okay.
You're going to reset me, huh?
Yeah.
Anyway, basically, we're in favor of what they want to do for Section 14. I want to remind the people who own condominiums in that area, as a representative here for Turnberry in Las Vegas. Three years ago, you could buy a Turnberry Estates condominium in Las Vegas right off the strip for $300,000 to $500,000. They are now $600,000 to over $1 million in Phase 3, and going up. So, property values are there. My biggest concern is room tax, especially if they build another hotel. I want to remind this council, there are three people, four of you, actually, that weren't here when, three years ago, when I presented an offer to buy the Prairie Schooner property from the city to build a large hotel on the fee land, that hotel guaranteed, in your offer, you were guaranteed $700,000 a year minimum in TOT, and being a five-star hotel, five-story hotel, probably up over $1 million a year in room tax. That is the biggest thing that I think that we have, the only thing we can say, is, in perpetuity, that the tribe, they do collect it. Native Americans, when they stay in the hotel, they don't pay the room tax, they don't have to, but when they have conventions, they shouldn't have any advantages over the other hotels in our community. Basically, as a former hotel owner, I think we all pay the room tax, we all use the police services, we all use the fire services, the paramedic services, our children go to these schools, we travel on the streets, and it's just something that galls me when they took away the room tax and then got the council to go along with this parking lot that should have been sold that, right now, today, could have a five-story Embassy Suites hotel on it, paying more than $700,000 a year in room tax. So, it's no skin off the tribe's back, it's just a pass-through. And the same thing with sales tax. That's where I fear we're going to lose the most. And those two issues, and I know there's not much we can do about it, but it could be done through an agreement to do other things. They want you to use, to use your condemnation powers in exchange, I would say, collect the room tax, pass it through. Collect the sales tax, don't ask for the rebates. Thank you.
And welcome.
I'm here for the... Can you hear me? There we go. I'm here for the Coachella Valley Taxi Owners Association, and basically, we're just trying to find out when we can get our issue that we've been here so many times before, the advertising for taxicabs on the agenda. Actually, I'm here for 300 people that make their living out of the taxicab industry, and I'm, we're kind of concerned because this, this thing is taking on a life form of its own, and we just want to get down and we want to talk to the council and let them know what the facts are. We've got articles in the D coming out that are totally wrong, talking about things that we, when we appeared here before, before the city council, we discussed these issues. They're implying that, to quote, they're talking about near-nude, slapping you in the face on advertising on taxicabs, when the council that was here before know that in our proposal that we handed in, we even said we would not advertise for anything that would be offensive to anybody in the valley. And since that time, we've gone out, we've gotten written agreements from every cab company that's not in our association that they would abide by ordinances set up by the city of Palm Springs. So, it's an entire industry thing now. We need this advertising desperately. We're down $1.7 million a year from what we were pre-9/11, regardless of what some line over there says. We have issues with them too, but, you know, we're trying to talk with them too, and we asked that, we asked them if they'll sit down with the board over there. It's like a stone wall. We can't get anything done. But that's got nothing to do with this. I know the attorney, Michael Kaiser, sent your city attorney a letter. He never got a reply from it. All, in this letter, all he was stating was the legal, you know, ramifications of not allowing taxicabs to advertise. And we just want to sit down and try to show the city council why this should be allowed, why the city of Palm Springs... Can I just have 20 seconds?
Twenty, but you can bring it to a close.
Okay. Why the city of Palm Springs is paying a taxi owner in London, England, $5,000 a year to advertise Palm Springs on his taxicab.
Okay.
That's about all I have to say. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome. Please give your name to the clerk. You're a stranger to us.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Aftab Dharain. I'm the general manager at the Hilton Palm Springs Resort. I've been only at this resort general manager for the last 14 years. I know the trends of this market, I believe, as much as anybody else, and I'm here tonight representing the 15 large and small hotels, approximately controlling 50% of the available rooms and generating in excess of 65% of the transient occupancy tax. I'm here tonight to move for, I'm here to urge the council to move forward on putting the convention center project on for bid to continue the expansion process. In November of 2001, all the hoteliers put an initiative on the ballot to increase the TOT. In November of 2002, we came up with another initiative for the large hotels, for another tax increase. Till now, for the last 24 months, we have generated and delivered to the city in excess of $3.3 million in increased TOT. The future looks bright, and we need to move forward for this expansion. As you all know it, that our weakened business continues to stay strong. Sunday through Thursday, year-round, including our prime season, it's a struggle, and the only way we can overcome the struggle is with the expansion of the convention center that will bring in large conventions that pay the highest dollars, that spend tremendous dollars at restaurants, shopping, as well as transportation. So, tonight, I'm here that we can move forward and have one of the biggest projects that we'll ever have for our city and for our future, because the expansion is needed for the future growth of our hospitality business. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Green, and I live, and I live at 555 San Lorenzo Road. I'm a local businessperson and own a small hotel with my partner. I'm also the president of the Desert Gay Tourism Guild. I'm on the board of the Palm Springs Hotel and Hospitality Association. I serve on the Bureau's Tourism Advisory Council, and I'm on the city's subcommittee, steering committee for the city's general plan update. Tonight, you're going to be hearing a report from our Bureau of Tourism. I've been part of a subcommittee that helped develop the report, and although I am thrilled with the direction we've taken and the progress we've made in the past six months, I do have one lingering area of concern, and that is the budget. It has been recommended to the committee and to the Bureau that they should ask for a minimal increase in spending for the next fiscal year and relative to the SMG contract. I'm not convinced that's the best course of action. Here's why. Since 9/11, every major city, not only in the U.S. but in North America, has increased its tourism spending. This is especially true of cities that market to the gay market segment, an important segment for us in Palm Springs. Philadelphia, a city that has never marketed to this segment before, is spending $330,000 this year marketing to the gay travel market. They intend to continue this level of spending for the next three years. Other cities like Atlanta, Houston, and New Orleans are doing the same thing. Our tourism base is not guaranteed. We can lose even more ground than we already have, and that takes money directly out of our city's pocket. I understand that we're operating in deficit. I understand that we're making cuts everywhere we can, but I have to tell you that if we don't reinvest in tourism, I think our budget problems will get worse. We have only one industry. If we invest in it, we can have a return on that investment, and it can help us solve deficit problems. If we choose to let it languish, we will face an even greater problem with our budget. The occupancy rates among Palm Springs hotels since 9/11 have either remained flat or diminished in some cases. We have to fix that, and we need your help to do it. Please choose to make an investment in tourism. Thank you.
And thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Ed Pollard. I'm general manager of the Ramada in Palm Springs. I have a letter from our owner I'd like to read. "I've had the pleasure of working with the staff at the Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism since I bought the Ramada Resort and Conference Center in 2002. I actually met with them prior to buying the hotel, and they gave me a great insight of Palm Springs, what a great destination it is, and some of the challenges that would lie ahead. Barbara Lyons, my director of sales, has worked very closely with Linda Fort, Howard Jacobs, and Jeff Hawker, attending numerous trade shows, hosting travel writers, and advertising opportunities. Barbara has always come back to me with nothing but positive comments on the professionalism displayed by the tourism staff, and more importantly, the business that was booked at the Ramada with their assistance. I know the city is facing some difficult financial times ahead. However, additional money needs to be spent on tourism, as this not only affects the hotels in Palm Springs, but also the attractions, restaurants, and retail stores who rely so heavily on our visitors. We would appreciate your supporting their sales and marketing effort, as they do generate TOT and sales tax for the city of Palm Springs. Signed, Philip Barney Hospitality." Mrs. Wood, clerk.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Ray Lovato, co-owner of Desert Shadows Inn. And I got to watch the chief of police sitting over my shoulder. It makes me nervous. I'm here speaking on behalf of tourism. When we started Desert Shadows Inn 10 years ago, it was a 10-room inn, and through hard work and expansion, and through, I think, marketing and advertising, we've become 33 rooms, 59 condos, another 17 across the street from the infamous bridge. And it's become known all throughout the world. My lovely wife, Susan, is now the general manager of the Villa Royale in Europa Restaurant. When she took over a year and a half ago, it was one of the best-kept secrets in Palm Springs, because she found out they spent like $5,000 a year on marketing and advertising. She changed all that, and in an economy that's not the best, she was 20% up last year over the previous year when she wasn't there, and the restaurant is over 200% over the previous year. And she did that by advertising in L.A., by advertising in Orange County, and by improving the website. You people here are the board of directors of this great city, and you only have, well, the best revenue-producing tool you have is tourism. And if you don't make an investment in the arm that brings in money, whether it be the convention center and/or the tourism bureau, it's going to take another step backwards, and we're going to continue to lose market share. And as we lose market share, it's going to be tougher and tougher to recover it. So, please consider that, you board of directors, when you make that decision. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I want to go just a moment to talk about the convention center. Aftab Dharain spoke about some of the possibilities in bringing groups to the Palm Springs with the expansion of the convention center. One thing I just want to point out is, the delays of the convention center has already caused three definite pieces of business to cancel and one tentative to look elsewhere, thus impacting Palm Springs' economic value of about $4.1 million. So, not only do we want to talk about the future, but if we don't stay on track, we're going to continue to lose some businesses already been confirmed at the hotels. So, please keep, keep everything on track, and thank you. Have a good evening.
Please give your name to the clerk.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dwayne Rohrbach, general manager of Wyndham Hotel. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in public comments? If not, then we will close public comments at this point. We do not have a consent agenda. There are no public hearings. Council will hold our council comments, announcement, inter-agency reports for the next agenda, if that's okay? Legislative action, convention center expansion, revised plans, and specification staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We had asked that, we have this meeting this evening, this adjourned meeting, to deal with one particular issue, and that is on the convention center. At our last meeting on the convention center design, we had discussed that the original bids we had put out had come out, come back way over budget. The direction from council was to have the architects do a redesign to bring the project back within the stated budget. They have done so. What is before you this evening is we are requesting you to approve the plans and specifications which will go out to bid. After that occurs, the process will be in 60 days, we will get the bids back, we will open the bids, and then bring those contracts to council at a subsequent meeting for your approval. So, all the requests tonight is to approve the plans and specifications to go out to bid. Now, what I would like, we have the architect from Denver here, Mr. Smoot, and Mike Fontana, the project directors are here as well, and I would like to turn it over to, Al, do you want to start? And also, Mr. Evans from planning will have some issues that he needs to bring council up to date on as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Pleased to see you again. We have, as Mr. Reddy said, taken your assignment from a couple of months ago to heart. We had a $4.5 million problem, and the committee has worked on that problem, and we're here to report to you tonight that we have taken care of the $4.5 million problem through some redesign changes that Mike Winters will talk to you about. And there's a mic there, Mike, that you can use up at the drawings if you would like to.
I'm Mike Winters, ventriloquist Bradburn Architects, and as David mentioned, the last time I was here, we were directed to go back and get the project back within budget. We've spent the last two months working very hard to do that. We've accomplished that. We've actually gone through and made extensive lists of cost-cutting opportunities, kind of brainstormed through multiple items, which included all the systems in the building, electrical systems, mechanical systems, interior finishes, exterior finishes, landscape, all those elements were put on the table and studied. We were successful in getting through those. What's on the wall up here, which I'll talk about, are primarily the exterior pieces. And as David mentioned, the plans and specs deal with much more than the drawings you see here on the wall. It's actually volumes of material. The drawings that are up, these were the previous drawings. We've red-marked some changes on those, and I'll go through those. These are the current drawings, which we're wanting to proceed forward with, and then these are the plans, which were marked up to, will illustrate the changes, and then this is what we're proposing to move forward with. I think we've been able to, with a lot of work and diligence, we've been able to maintain the integrity of the design. So, I'm very pleased to announce that the signature component pieces of the stone columns along the western facade of the building are intact. They are still natural stone material. We are maintaining the undulating roof line, which relates back to the mountain edge. We are maintaining a wood, natural ceiling, which extends outside as well as inside, so the form and shape of the building has remained intact. Primarily, the exterior architectural change, which we had to make, was we had to reduce some of the quantity of the stone on the building. So, on the western facade, the elevation, which is primarily the recessed elevation, which sits back about 40 feet from the face of the building, has been changed from a stone material to an upgraded stucco material. We researched this particular material, and I'll pass it around. It's a color that we want to relate back to the stone. We're not trying to simulate the stone or mimic it, but what we want to do is make it work in harmony with the stone, so we've picked a color which will work with this natural stone, which we've picked for the colonnade out on the western face of the building. This particular material has, as you can see, multiple colors into it, and has a variety across the surface, which is different and an upgrade over the common stucco, which is a monochromatic material. As we move around the building on the north side, we've taken the screen wall, which is the wall that screens the loading dock element along Amado, and that, that material will also change from the stone material originally proposed to this upgraded stucco material, as well as the wall along Caballeros on the eastern side of the exhibit hall. So, those are the primary architectural finish changes. On the plan, the plan here that denotes the red marks, there's, there's three primary changes to the plan. One was, we looked at eliminating a water feature, which was here at the corner of Amado and Alvarado on the northwest corner. The second was going from a flagstone, stone paver material to a colored concrete material. So, we still have a hardscape plaza where we want, we just changed the type of material from a stone paver to a colored concrete paver. And then the third area is the southeast corner of the building, which originally, in our base design, we were going to maintain the building as a parking area. So, the existing parking area that's on the southeast quadrant of the building today would remain intact. That was the base bid. We were proposing, before the building was estimated to be over budget, to provide an ad alternate for an additional piece. And what an ad alternate is, is it's, if we could afford it, if the bids would have come in under, we would have added back a canopy courtyard and a new lobby space on the southeast of the building. Well, obviously, when we were $4 million over budget, the possibility of that coming in as an ad alternate was probably fairly remote. So, at that point, we decided not to go forward with a ad alternate drawing, but what we did do was we added back this component piece, which now, instead of having as the base design a parking lot on the southeast of the building, we are providing a landscaped event lawn. So, now we can still have outdoor events similar to what occur on the western side of the building today. So, in this case, it's, it's probably seen as an improvement over the base building bid previously, but we are not providing an ad alternate component piece. So, let's kind of take you through the exterior changes that we've done, both to the landscape and the architectural exterior of the building.
If we could, at this point, I'd like to have Doug maybe report on what happened at the planning commission today, if he could.
As I think most of you know, a lot happened at the planning commission meeting today. We had a very long meeting. We... Yes, it is. I'm pleased to report. And the planning commission had a joint meeting with the design review committee today, starting roughly, I think it was about 5:15, 5:30. It's unusual, but we wanted to have the planning commission team and the design review team, as well as the development team in the room at the same time reviewing the plans. The planning commission and the design review board both recommended approval of the final development plans. Actually, the planning commission action is technically final for a planned development district, but obviously, the council on a public project approves the specifications that's on your agenda tonight. That was a 4-0 vote. Commissioners did express concern that they felt that if there were any way to add everything back, they'd prefer it, but they also acknowledged the fact that we have a budget. And you did get a unanimous recommendation from the planning commission. I am going to pass around, actually, a report, so I don't have to go through all of it. But these are the types of recommendations, and Mr. Winters went over most of them and pointed out the areas it has to do predominantly with landscaping and just reworking that event center area and some of the perimeter landscaping. In the technical term of landscape, they said, let's beef it up. It's a big building, and we took some architectural character away, and you need to add some landscape back. So, we're going to need some larger plant materials in some areas, probably not a whole lot more, but a little bit sturdier, larger trees, particularly on the east side of the building in the corners. And I think we can work that through with the landscape architect. The one item I would like to talk about is, you know, at last week's council meeting, there were public comments about parking and the fact that, you know, the fact we might not build the north parking lot would bring us short, and we would be inconsistent with the environmental assessment and previous approval for the convention center. We put together a report to the planning commission that we attached to what I just handed out, and I'm just going to address Phase 1. Under the original Phase 1... Under the original phase one expansion, we were proposing 725 parking spaces. They all would have been north of Amato. The prairie schooner would have only been an overflow lot, would have been semi or unimproved relative to the way it is today, or it's being improved today. The revised plan actually adds parking spaces because we're going to do a portion of the north lot. The prairie schooner lot is almost finished, and we're going to open the convention center with 935 parking spaces, which is more than was originally recommended. So I think when you take a look at the original project description and the intent, we certainly are building enough parking spaces for the convention center. We're distributing them a little bit differently and probably better for the neighborhood, as well as for the conventioneers that will come to the convention center. So we're very comfortable that we're right on point relative to parking and the environmental assessment that was previously done. And if everything works out, we'll probably have some temporary ability for overflow parking on the north, in the north parking lot area, because we're going to have that graded, sealed with soil cement, and we might be able to put temporary parking in there that would bring us closer to 1,200 parking spaces for larger events. So we're very comfortable. I think the commission was comfortable with the parking, and that completes our report. And I hope, hope I'm almost done talking today. I'm a little worn out after the Section 14 public hearing.
Thank you, Doug, and thank you today for your help with the planning commission. It helped push things through. What I'm passing around now is some financial information about the project, and we'll get that out to you, and then I'll walk you through it rather quickly and try to answer your questions. The first two pages of that document are the pages that I gave you at the joint council, tribal council meeting back in December. At the time, we had a $4 million deficit, and the first page kind of explains that to you and shows the $4 million deficit. And the project at that point was told to go back and make these cuts. The second page is back up to that, that gets you to the $25.8 million that's available for construction. And I don't want to spend a lot of time on that. We can come back to it and look at it if you'd like. I want to spend some time on the last sheet, which is the updated sheet for the project as it sits today. The project as it sits today, with half of the north parking lot being built, has $26.6 million for construction. Currently, I mean, $26.3 million for construction, I'm sorry. Currently, our latest estimate up to yesterday afternoon has the project at $26.6 million, which is about $290,000 over the budget. Within that budget, there's a line item up there that's called contingencies, and we have two kinds of contingencies that we're carrying into the project. We had $800,000 for a bidding period contingency, and that's monies that we expected to need to use during the bidding process, because cost estimating is not a precise science. Some will be up, some will be down, and so we wanted to carry some additional dollars. And then also, we have $3.7 million in there for a construction contingency, which is 13% of the estimated cost, which is the dollar amount we think we should carry into a complicated project like this to make sure we can complete it. At this point, we, with the $290,000 over budget, we've consumed some of that bidding period contingency. We didn't want to start that way, but that's the way we think we are. We are continuing. Matter of fact, we had meetings yesterday and again today, looking at the plans, and we believe we're finding other things that hopefully will help reduce that by the time we get to the actual bidding period. We'll get back to where we need to be as far as the budget goes. We do have a couple of concerns that we need to report to you. Steel continues to be the most volatile product out there related to this project, even though the president has lifted the various tariffs that were out there on it. The US dollar's not doing too good against a lot of the other currencies that are out there, and we've been told that we should expect a 10% price increase in steel between now and when we actually bid this project. With $5 million worth of steel, that doesn't help the budget. Secondly, the bidding environment right now, there is lots and lots of construction going on everywhere, and so there are, it will be difficult to pull people in to bid. However, I need to report to you that Turner has been doing an unbelievable job of lining up contractors, and we're getting good participation with people who want to be pre-qualified to bid this project. So we believe that we will have enough of the major trades involved to ensure some good competition on the project. The effort that the team is continuing with at this point is a very close scrutiny of the plans and the specifications. The plans are actually in plan check right now, and we've been told as of this afternoon, they'll probably be completed through plan check by the end of the week. It looks like there's very minor changes in it. At the same time, we're evaluating the specifications and reading them page by page to make sure that there's nothing in there that we've missed that will add cost to the project, or there's not a better way that we can do it. And at the same time, we're developing a contingency list of things that could be taken out of the project if need be, if, when the bids come in, they're in excess of the budget. And we will have that listed at our hands to where, when we get the bids in, we will be able to propose back to you how to keep the project moving if it is indeed above estimate. We believe the project has come a long way since the last time you have seen it. The plans are complete. They are a huge set of documents and are a very complete set of documents, and have had, not only our architects and their engineers, but Turner's engineers looking at them to try to tweak it as best we can to make a good, solid set of bid documents, and we think we are there, and we will continue to work on them throughout the bid process. If you look back on the first sheet, at the bottom of it, you can see the schedule that we told you about back in December. At this point, the project, the plans will be completed and ready to, for us to get them out on the street on February 2nd. You're actually approving the plans a week early, tonight, hopefully. The project will go to bed sometime around the 5th of February. And at this point, bids will actually be due on the 17th, not the 18th. And, I'm sorry, will be due on the 16th, not the 18th, and we'll be proposing that we bring those to council for award on the 17th of March. And with construction to begin on April 19th, which is actually the Monday instead of the 15th, which was a Thursday. And we're continuing to plan on completed by September 1st of 2005. One of the reasons that we're trying to move the bid award up a few days from what was shown on here is steel. Not only is the price of steel going up, but the deliverability and the timing of receiving it is getting longer. And so we want, that is really the critical path item on this project, and so we need to get it purchased just as absolutely quick as we can, so we can start the process of getting it brought to the site. That's our report, Mr. Mayor. We'd be happy to try to answer questions. Jim Dunn is here, Mike Fontana is here, and of course, Mike Winters from the architectural firm is here. We'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, are there any questions at this time?
Mr. Mayor, could you break down the bonds and TOT collections and give me two figures on that, rather than lumping that together?
If you go to the second page, you'll see the bond proceeds is the second line, and the TOT collections are about a third of the way down in the page. It says TOT collections, '02, '03, '04, '05, '06, '07. That's the collections that'll come in during the project up until the first debt service is being due in fiscal '06, '07.
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Mayor, I'm the council subcommittee on this. I've spent several hours with Mr. Smoot, Mr. Fontana. Since we sent them back to, and Mr. Winters, since we sent them back to bring their project in on budget, I'm confident that what we're looking at here is a workable scheme. They, along with Turner, I think have put forth a monumental effort to get where we needed to do. We took a lot of money, or they took a lot of money, out of a project that was, there wasn't a lot to take, and I don't think, as planning commission and architectural review also felt that the building is suffering from the exterior. I think the comments from planning commission that were added, I think, are very good. I think will help to mitigate some of the problems that did happen with some of the scaling back. But I think it's, I think it's a great building, great structure, and everyone who's worked on this is to be commended. And I know it will be a major effort to get subcontractors to bid on this project. It is a tough time to bid, to build. And, but Turner, as I understand, has sent out over 200 faxes to subcontractors that they work with to get them to pre-qualify, and I know they make phone calls to them constantly. So I'm confident that we will get a good number. As Mr. Smoot said, estimating is purely that, and I think we've done the best estimating effort we can. I'm certainly happy with it. So with that, I'd like to move the, is it a resolution run? I don't --
Yes. Yes, I'd like to move the resolution.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, by Mr. McCullough. Is there any other discussion, any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I don't believe this council has seen it, but has it been presented to council, the increment on the TOT tax and how it pays off the debt service on the bonds? Have we seen that?
Yes, Councilmember McCullough, that is part of what is before you. Some of the, on the second page, the TOT collections, you started in fiscal year, about a third of the way down, '02, and then '03, '04, '05, '06, '07. That's what's projected, and the debt service begins then in '06, '07. And that top figure, about $2.3 million, it's going to level off and then move up in increments from there. So that is the revenue to pay the new debt for the expansion.
And what will be the annual, the estimated annual debt service of, on the new debt?
It's roughly $2 million, but I'd ask either Al or Tom Canar, our finance director, to give you a more specific number, just to be clear.
At this point, obviously, we haven't even priced the bond issue with the information we did have, and making some guesses at where interest rates are right now. We think it's going to be about $2.3 million in fiscal '06, '07, when the actual out-of-pocket debt service will kick in. And that's our best estimate at the moment. So the additional TOT that's coming in from the rate increases should match the debt service that we'll have on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Miss Foden.
Yeah, I am, I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I can't vote in favor without making a statement, because we've, we've come down this road so far that I don't think there's any turning back at this point. But I think it's important to note that we have, to date, spent $77 million, or should say, lost $77 million in that neighborhood. We've got a $25 million loss, at least, since the convention center has opened. And I feel uncomfortable in just, I can't do a rah 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 about supporting this. I know it's an important thing for the hotels, and I know it's an important thing for tourism. But I am very, very concerned of where we are financially. And if Proposition 58 does not pass, we are going to be in even greater financial debt as a city than we expect to be in this coming year. So I just wanted us to just keep that in mind, that even though there isn't a city that I know of that makes, that doesn't have a debt on their convention center, doesn't have a loss, I think the percentage of loss for our convention center in relation to our budget is a very high loss. Thank you.
Mr. Ponge.
I just want to take a look at the bid timeline. It just seems so very, very tight to me. And I'm assuming, obviously, the bids can come in, but are we hindering ourselves? I know we're in a rush to do this with, I mean, to me, what seems like a tight bid process.
It is tight, but it's a lot better than it was the last time we started out with this. We only gave ourselves four weeks for the bidders to deal with the plans. We're now giving ourselves six weeks. We've talked to the major trades, the steel folks, the concrete folks, and they've told us that six weeks is an adequate period of time if they get a complete set of drawings at the beginning, which they didn't get last time. And they're going to be receiving a complete set of drawings right out of the box this time. And so we believe the six-week period will be adequate for us. And we, probably the short thing is that we're going to receive bids one day and try to analyze them all night long, so we can get answers back to you the next night. And really, the reason we're doing that is to try to cut a week out on the delivery of steel. And every week is a week that'll come off the other end of the project, so that's why we're going to try to push it through.
Thank you. We'll send you pizza between March 16th and the 24th.
Are there any other comments? Just like to thank you, Mr. Winters, for being here and for the presentation this evening, and to all of our staff who've worked so hard on this. And in a, in a sense, Ms. Foden, I agree with you in the sense that we are very, very far down this road, and it's a matter of continuing to support an asset that helps us in so many ways. But I do understand your concern. And with that, we will have our roll call.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Aye, it is unanimous. Are there any additional legislative items?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make one comment, and I don't get an opportunity to do this too often, but this last year and a half, two years, a year and a half, you know, we've seen that the staff has done some very tremendous things. And you look at the parking structure, the skate park, the visitor center, and this convention center. These projects have been difficult in many ways. They've been difficult on land acquisition many times, have been difficult on budget, they've been difficult on bids coming back, and we've been up and down, and the staff has been very good, and I just think they deserve a little recognition, and I would like to thank them publicly for that hard work.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any added starters?
There are none, sir.
Reports or requests?
There are none.
Counsel reports or requests? Public reports or requests? Staff reports or requests? We will adjourn this meeting. Our next meeting will be at February 4th. The next study session will be February 11th, both at 7:00 PM. And closed session will begin at
5:00 PM.
At 5:00 PM. And now we will move to our second agenda, our study session. Agenda. Will reconvene, closed session, report?
Yes, counsel and the city and the agency met in closed session. For the agency, real property negotiations, the item involving VIP and Mark Gabe, we gave a status report on real property negotiations, and direction was given for further negotiation. The item involving the winter parcel was not discussed. Under litigation matters for the agency, we gave a status report on the litigation matter involving the Citizens for Local Government Accountability. No action was taken with respect to the city of Palm Springs. Real property negotiations involving Desert Water Agency, we gave a status report, direction was given for further negotiations. Item listed involving the Burr Group was not discussed. The item The item listed concerning Greyhound lines, we gave a status report concerning negotiations, direction was given for further negotiations. The item listed concerning the Golf Course Hotel Swank, we gave a status report concerning those negotiations, direction was given for further negotiations. The litigation items listed involving the two lawsuits concerning Eldorado, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Exposure litigation, three cases, we gave a status report, no action was taken. And the initiation of litigation, we gave a status report, no action was taken.
Thank you. Are there any questions on that? Okay. We will now open the floor for public comments on matters within the jurisdiction of the entities. If there's anyone who'd like to speak in public comments, please come forward at this If not, we will close public comments. If there are no reports, then I'll hold my report for the next meeting. Okay. Okay, all righty, that's fine. City manager comments, follow-up requests?
Mr. Mayor, I think we're just ready to move into the agenda items.
Okay, okay. City council study session topics, item number one, Tourism Services Agreement, SMG. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I do need to note, number two on the agenda, the assessment district formation. We are going to ask to postpone that discussion. There's some additional information, I think, would be germane to the council. It's not entirely ripe yet, and we would ask you, when we do the docket discussion at the end of the meeting, that that would be included in that list. Now, to the Tourism Services Agreement, this is an agreement that we have with SMG, which is the same company on the convention center. This is a companion contract, and it is a five-year contract, and it has come due. I wanted to take this opportunity to renew, to ask council, to recommend to council, a few additional points in the contract that I think will be very beneficial to the tourism industry and our stakeholders. What I would like to do right now, ask to come to the microphone, three people, Linda Fort, our Director of Tourism, Mary Jo Ginther, the General Manager of the Hyatt, and Michael Green, who is the Manager of Triangle Inn. And they are the ad hoc committee that has to do with the first change. What I would like to do is pass out to you, and I think council has it, the Tourism Services Agreement. It's the summary of main terms of the agreement, the one page, which is coming around now. Yes, it's the one I handed out earlier, just if you don't have a copy. First, briefly, I will explain the process, council, so to make this very, run smoothly, and then we'll explain what the binders are for. First of all, in this one page, these are the points, the main deal points, that we are recommending, that you give us direction on. Now, the actual contract, we'll come back to you at a regular meeting, hopefully within the next 30 to 60 days. However, what I'd like to do right now is just address the first point, which deals with the group that has assembled here this evening. And then, of course, in brief, we can go through the balance of the deal points after this first discussion. What I had hoped to do is, in my observation, was that the current contract lacked a certain amount of stakeholder input, which means I wasn't sure that it was serving the tourism industry as to their level of satisfaction. So what I suggested, that in this process, that we would, in essence, have a committee of stakeholders that would work with tourism to recommend to council what they feel is the right programs for the budget that council has. This is particularly important because of our deficit and of the limited resources we can give to them. We felt that the input from the stakeholders on that limited pot of money would become even more important. So what I am suggesting is that we devise the, in the contract, the Budget and Programs Committee. This group will work with tourism, and it will represent the stakeholders of tourism to decide what programs should be spent, our budget should be spent on throughout the year. And we would specify in here that this group would consist of representatives from the PSHHA, which is the Palm Springs Hotel and Hospitality Association, members of Main Street, a member of the Uptown Association, and a member of the DG TG. And someone help me with DG TG.
Designation.
Thank you. So what's assembled here before you is a dry run of what that would look like. I had asked this group to get together, and they've had several meetings, and I'd like to thank them for all their, for all their work and contribution, sat down with tourism Linda Fort. And together, they fashioned what they feel the budget for the balance of this year, the best way to affect tourism in our community. And they're here tonight just to let you know, and that's what's in your binders, and they'll get to that in a moment. Now, what will happen each year at budget time, this group will come and make that same presentation. So the city council will know that for the entire year's budget, whatever that's going to be, that tourism and the stakeholders are in sync with where they're going to spend their limited dollars for tourism. Under that scenario, we hope to satisfy the greatest good and get the biggest bang for our buck in tourism. So that being said, I would like to turn it over now to Mary Jo and Linda Fort, for them to give you their read on this process and their recommendations. Ladies?
Hi, I'm Mary Jo Ginther, General Manager of the Hyatt and President of the Palm Springs Hotel and Hospitality Association. David pretty much gave you a recap of the process that's brought us here tonight. As he mentioned, we did meet several times. We actually took this to the hotel association initially, put it to the board for discussion, and there was an idea initially of a commission. And we then quickly, I shouldn't say quickly, after some discussion and some historical perspective, dismissed that idea and went on to this ad hoc committee idea. It's an inclusive committee. Right now, the members are myself, Michael, Charlie Robles of the Parker Meridian, Aftav Dot of the Hilton, Joy Meredith of Main Street, and we are asking the Uptown, oh, Ray Lovato, excuse me, and we're asking the Uptown Heritage District to join with us on this committee. So those are the present members. Those members may change, but certainly the representation would not. So with that, we're here tonight to ask you to formalize that process. We have worked on this fiscal year, which Linda is going to detail for you a little bit. And if allowed to go forward, we will then start to put together the direction, the budget, and planning for the next fiscal year. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
In y'all's packets, notebooks, we've put together a compilation of what we do. We have the...
Is your light bit?
Yes, it is. And my mic's on, too.
So there.
Anyway, in your notebook, you've got our spreadsheet, which shows the budget, what has been spent, uh, spunt, spent through the first six months and what is to be spent for the remaining six months. There is a copy of our travel trade shows that we do, and a copy of our media plan. We have worked very closely with this ad hoc committee in determining what trade shows are best that represents the entire City of Palm Springs, what advertising mediums we need to be in, and how we should spend our dollars. And I do want to stress to you that we are, number one, not a membership organization. So everybody in this city is a stakeholder that depends on tourism dollars. So we have a very large constituency that we represent when we're out promoting Palm Springs. Another thing we have done is we have taken the word "season" out of our vocabulary. To us, Palm Springs is a year-round vacation destination. And we just find, thank you very much, sir, and we just find that's very important because, to me, that's the death bell when you say it's the season, because that limits. So we have been very successful in doing that. You'll see more and more of our international market is coming in through the summer. They historically would leave around the first of September. They're now staying up almost through the holidays. We're having more and more families that are coming into Palm Springs during the summers because it's more affordable for them to come. So we've done a lot of work in positioning Palm Springs as a destination. And for those of you who have traveled anywhere in the world and you tell them where you live, people immediately know the city. And I'm here if you have any questions on anything it is that we do.
And then I'll proceed with the other points.
Okay.
But I know if you have any questions at this point on the makeup of the committee or their work.
There, I'll turn mine on. Bullet number one, in addition, the Budget and Programs Committee will meet quarterly with the manager to review manager's progress implementing the marketing program. That review process, whether it be a written report or a verbal report, how, take me one step further, what you will do with that information.
Quite frankly, we haven't gotten to that point yet. We have not submitted any written reports because we're working on this year. So it would make sense that we would submit, or Linda would submit, a written report quarterly that's the result of our meetings. Of course, we all take those back to our respective associations as well. And so we would need a written report for that, for that purpose. That same report could come to you.
Mr., I think it's a great idea, quarterly, because a year happens so quickly, and we've gone from one point to the next. I think that's a very good check of balance.
Also, members of council, if I would note, where you see in this, where it says "manager", that refers to the manager, which would be Ms. Fort, the manager of the tourism, not the city manager.
We're with you. Okay, you can continue. I think that's, are there any other questions, council? Okay.
Some questions about this, but not about the presentation.
Do you want those questions?
No, let's use my question.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, moving down the list, what we're going to request is that, what's different from the current is we're going to request, make sure that there's a line item budget and that the Director of Finance is in the loop on this. There was lacking that financial accountability, not that, not that anything improper occurred, it's just we want to formalize it in this, this new contract. The next is that we're also, as part of the accountability, we're going to make sure that any overage of budget will have written authorization and approval by the city council. Next is the big question, and that big question is, what is the base going to be to fund tourism every year? Currently, currently, that number is approximately 1.4 million, actually, closer to 1.5, $1,482. Now, the reason that becomes so important is, we have plugged that number into our budget for next year in our forecast. With that number in there, that's our minimum $3.5 million deficit. So funding it fully, we will have our deficit. They are here to ask you, and rightly so, and it's a very fair debate, they would like to have an increase in the minimum budget. This number was set approximately five years ago. Now, in that five-year time, council has seen or felt it was right to give them additional dollars to do specific things for that particular point in time. And being passed out to you now is the actual amounts of dollars that the city council has authorized for tourism. And accompanying that is the percentage of the TOT that that number represents. So you see, it went from a low of $1,400,000 to a high of $1,700,000 in 2003. This year, because of the deficit, we gave them the minimal amount which was called for by the contract. What I'm going to recommend to council is that we keep that number the same. We keep that number the same because the deficit is so uncertain at this point. Now, the key component of this, with the very important proviso, is that every year, when this group comes with a program, they have the flexibility, if in fact they are persuasive to council, for whatever reason, that they would do extra programs for the extra dollars, city council certainly would have the flexibility to add to their budget on a yearly basis. So at least for this next year, we would recommend that we maintain the same budget number, and then council could fund any program they felt over and above that was important to tourism. I'll move on if, okay. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
David, in this graph we're looking at, the numbers for 2001, '02, and '03, there were special projects that were, the council had given dollars for during those periods of time. Are those numbers included in these numbers?
They are inclusive. Now, Tom, can we confirm that? They should be inclusive? Yes, they are.
So was the base number, though, this always the same, the 1482? And so this is what the council has done over the past?
Correct.
But not initially?
Correct.
As the need arose, is that correct?
That is correct. And is part of the beauty of this system we're recommending is that when they come at the beginning of the budget cycle to make their case, for example, after September 11th, the council felt that it was important to get, to prime the engine, and they gave them additional dollars to do additional advertising. Depending upon the situation, council would have the flexibility every year to do the same thing.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Pugnay.
Mr. Reddy, there's, so we're looking at a $230,000 difference between fiscal 2003 and 2004. Is there something, that $230,000, a special event or something there that was really benefiting the city that, where did that $230,000 go? Is that something we really should be discussing now or not?
That's a very good point, and they will be the first to tell you, and I'm sure Linda is just wants to get a hold of that microphone. But in this business, the more you tell, the more you sell. And the more money we give them, the more they can tell, the more they can sell. So in essence, it's an opportunity cost loss. So in this year, she has had or done less than she did last year, for example, in advertising because of the reduction in money. But Linda, would you like to weigh in on that, please?
Actually, we had a number of opportunities that, that money was spent on, and I started out with it. Let's see. Oh, here it is, right here. It was all specifically advertising-oriented, and if I may, I'll pass this around, that shows where that money specifically went. And I don't know if this is the appropriate time, Mr. Mayor, but, you know, regarding our fixed budget for the last five years, it is difficult to work on a budget because as our hard costs go up, which is everything from, you know, just operating the office to the cost of airfare to get to a trade show, the cost of advertising, et cetera, it makes it more and more difficult for us to keep up with the competition. The competition for the visitors' dollars is extremely fierce, and we can't do our job behind the desk. We go out to the travel trade, to the consumer, bring them to Palm Springs to show the city off. And on the current budget, to keep it that way for next fiscal year is very restricting to us. With this new process we're going through with the, we refer to them as the ad hoc committee, it's really a great process, and they've got new ideas, new thoughts of where to advertise over and above what we've done. So, you know, we do hope that you will keep in mind that it's difficult having the same budget for five years, nearly going on six years, and to ask that it be kept at the same level.
I just want to add one thing. When we were going through, year by year, on the budget, one of the things I was charged to do was look at comparative media spending over the courses of the years. And at $1.48 million, we will be at pre-9/11 media spending. That will be the amount of media spending we were able to spend in the year 2000. So that's what we're going back to if we stay at this budget.
We also prepared for you in your packets, a breakdown of '01 and '02, and '02 and '03, of all the additional programs we were able, which is a little bit more complete than the handle, all the additional programs we were able to accomplish with the increased funds. It should be in the back of your packet there. It should be in the back of your packet there.
In the packet?
Packet. Actually, we had planned on doing a PowerPoint presentation, and it is part of the printed
out PowerPoint presentation.
That includes our mission statement, all of our goals for this fiscal year, and what we have, and what we did accomplish with the additional funding.
Shall we proceed, council? Okay, thank you. A couple other final items, is that the city would have some input on the role of the membership of the Tourism Advisory Committee, and also the city attorney had then asked on the next point that the city attorney have input on any contracts that SMG or the tourism enters into, just to make sure they conform to city standards. And finally, well, actually, there's two more points. There was a big discussion on special events, Weekend with Elvis, Rocktoberfest, et cetera. Tourism has done these traditionally in an effort to respond and always to bring more tourism in. However, the original purpose and mission of tourism was a little different. It was to deal with the smaller hotels, hoteliers, and the retails and things that that entails and brings in. So there was a bit of mission creep out of necessity, but as you can appreciate, doing one thing takes our, her focus away from something else. And that was one of the reasons why it was important for the stakeholders to have some input, so council understands what is it we really want them to do. With dollars so scarce, we have to make some difficult choices. And what I would like to do is marry Joe to address the issue of special events on their conclusions. Thank you.
What the Planning Committee has recommended is that we, at the Bureau of Tourism, not be involved in the sponsorship of special events for the city of Palm Springs. The reason for that, not that we don't stand behind special events, we would love to see them every weekend of the year, no, more than that, midweek. But with the budget as it is, and not being able to create a budget to sponsor special events, we just don't feel that the money is there in the present budget to be able to do that. And again, if in the future, we are able to get, increase the budget for the Bureau of Tourism, that certainly becomes a possibility that the committee and the bureau can look at and to see which ones will bring us the most visibility, the most revenue for retail, for hotels, for restaurants, and for the community as a whole, but the money isn't there presently.
And what we're, how we're going to handle those, and not that they aren't important, they are important, we're just going to handle it slightly different. For example, next week, we'll be on your agenda, a request from the Wyndham to sponsor Miss Teen. Now, this group will weigh in on each of those requests. They will advise council, you know, is it good for room nights, is it good for tourism, on and on. So it helps you make an informed decision, but since Linda won't have those dollars in her budget to actually do it, it'll be, council, again, has the flexibility if they want to actually fund it. Now, the idea is to have as many of those at the beginning of the year, the fiscal year, upfront, so council knows what you're dealing with. But as you know, things come up at the last minute, the council would need the flexibility. The Easter Bowl is another one. Council has felt it important to fund that in our actual appropriations budget as opposed to in tourism. So again, the same thing would be with Rocktoberfest. Now, what Linda's role will be, if council decides they want to go forward, Linda obviously will be support and technical support and professional support and help the event unfold, but it won't take away from her budget. So she's certainly a resource, but yet she has her mission with the dollars that council has appropriated. So that being said, on to Linda, would you like to add anything to that? I know you have two issues right now. In this fiscal year, the Weekend with Elvis, I believe you need some council direction.
Right, and the main thing that we want to stress is that we're not looking to the city to fund it completely, you know. We really feel that there are good resources for outside funding. The Weekend with the King is scheduled for Father's Day weekend. If we were able to do it again, if the committee goes along with, the city council goes along with it, as we did last year, a special event organizer who specializes in Elvis competitions was hired. We really don't know much about putting on an Elvis competition and all that was involved. That is this fiscal year, if we're allowed to do it. We, last year, it cost us approximately $65,000. It was a new event, the organizer, there were a lot of activities that we, you know, having done it once, we don't need to go back and redo, so we don't think it would be as expensive to do this year, and certainly not as lengthy time-wise. Instead of having 40 Elvai competing in one day, drop it down to a lesser amount. But there are ways to cut back the financial investment in that. And once again, the people that are interested in putting this event on, under our umbrella, is Joe Esposito, who was Elvis's best friend, and Darwin Lamb, who is the publisher of the Elvis magazine. They have expressed interest in actually managing the event for us. So you have a good resource there of people that are familiar with the Elvis world, that are familiar in doing the competitions, where our primary responsibility would be to market it. I had an email today from Austria asking, when was the Elvis event? Even though it's been held, you know, only one year, it does have the potential for becoming a large event.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McCullough.
One of the things that I would, that I'm going to request be done, when we get, when this council has brought items, and they say it's going to be $65,000 to put on this event, I'm going to request, I know it's difficult, because I've made this request before, life's difficult, our jobs are difficult, but I want to see a nexus between what we're spending and the return that the city's going to get through TOT and sales tax revenues. And I've heard that it was difficult to do this, we talked to the hoteliers, we asked them to track their room nights, they don't, they don't fill it out, they don't get back to us, we call them. Well, to me, that is a hollow excuse, because the hoteliers are the ones that we're putting this money up to benefit, and if they cannot have a plan to where they're held accountable and to report back to us at least and make a concerted effort, a good faith effort, to let us know how room nights are increased, I'm going to find it very difficult in light of these budget deficits to reach into our wallet and start writing blank checks without knowing how it's going to benefit the general fund.
Councilman, you raise a very good point, and are the, we envision that each special request that comes before council, this committee will have met and gone through to give council an idea of what the number of room nights, what kind of impact they'll have on the retail, commercial, restaurants. It's a very valid point, and each time there's a request, we hope, or we will have for you in writing their best estimates of what those benefits will be.
And then I would like to see, not only the best estimates, but see a debriefing later to see, you know, what kind of response we had on the request, how the system's working, and what the real numbers appear to be. Obviously, it's not going to be an exact to-the-penny accounting, but I think that we need to have some direction here. If we're asked to spend money, then make sure that it is benefiting the city and the general fund in particular.
Respond to that. One of the specific reasons that we, as an ad hoc committee, had recommending taking promotions out of the base tourism budget is because we felt like it was impossible for tourism to really do that. Whereas promoters are able to do that, events that have happened are able to do that, we as a group feel like it's absolutely necessary in order for us to approve something and bring it to you or support it if it's brought to you to be able to do that. We couldn't figure out a way to do that within the auspices of the tourism budget, and so that's one of the reasons that we've requested that promotions be taken out of that area. I know we've gone back and forth, because you get into the issue of, there are good events, there are bad events, there are whatever kind of events, they all have to have a baseline that they're measured against, and we felt like that baseline needed to be objective, not something subjective.
Thank you. Ms. Fort.
I have a couple of questions. One, what was the, what's this $11,000 for the Cannes Film Festival? What do we do in Cannes? Last year, we received a call three weeks before the Cannes Film Festival, that one of their major sponsors had dropped out, and we had an opportunity to buy one of these revolving billboards, buy three revolving billboards for $11,000. So for that amount of money, we had three revolving billboards that 256 times a day per billboard, we had a 30-second spot on Palm Springs with a tagline at the end promoting the Palm Springs International Film Festival and the dates. Because I wanted to volunteer to go to Cannes, if that's what, next time I get asked, you can go. My other questions have to do with, on the budget, I don't see any expenditures for any of the events, so where does that, where do we find those expenditures?
I mean, for the past ones.
Right.
Those are included in some of the advertising, depending upon what it was spent for, it might have been advertising, it might have been promotions, but it's in that budget there. But one of the points you're making is that it no longer will reflect anywhere in the tourism budget, because that will come from a separate appropriation if it's going to come and if council thinks it's important enough, and we would track that differently.
Okay.
And that's one of the benefits. Right now, in essence, it kind of cannibalizes the tourism budget, so this way, we keep it more separate and we're able to account for it better. And also, members, just moving on, there's two more things.
No, I have another question. I would really like, in the future, if we could see a cost center accounting, and rather than lumping everything together, I think it would be, give us a better picture of what we're spending things on, because the website advertising link, maybe I understand that, but when I have, when I see advertising just lumped in together, it doesn't say anything about where we're advertising or what kind of markets we're in. So if we could break that down for next year to, not necessarily a line item, even a cost center kind of of budgeting, that would be helpful.
If you will, look, you have an advertising schedule in your.
In the book?
Yes, ma'am. And that shows where the advertising dollars are.
Well, I'm not just interested in the advertising, in the overall budget and the entire budget. So that would be helpful.
That'll do.
And the other thing that I was curious about, the, is point number two, where they're required to submit a line item budget, but not keep within the line item budget, what is the reasoning of that?
What that is, is if council appropriates certain dollars in essence for a cost center, and the manager, Ms. Fort, feels that it's important to move some money around for one reason or another, she has the ability to do that, but yet not to go beyond the actual amount the council appropriated. So the line item budget is for us to track it, but she has the ability to move between line items as she sees fit, depending upon the program, things she's working on.
So in other words, if the budget that we approve has, say, $50,000 in it for advertising, we in reality could only be spending $10,000 in advertising and $40,000 in other things.
Well, actually, it's a little more refined than that. What you're going to see, a budget that says, say, $50,000 in advertising, and it's going to list which kind of advertising, Orange County billboards, magazines, but let's say, for example, she needs the flexibility, she gets a deal on some billboard, and she needs an extra $5,000 there at the expense of less $5,000, less somewhere else.
All right, I understand what you're saying, but that's not clear from here, but not the line item budget. That to me would mean that you could move monies around into different categories.
I think that is what it means. The answer to your $40,000, $50,000 answer is yes.
And no. Let me work that out in the details when we see the contract.
And I also would like to remind you, we have this committee that's going to very much be monitoring what we're doing. I know, but how you, how I judge a program is by, or the city, or anything that you do, is by looking at the budget. It tells, it tells what your goal is, it tells what your vision is. People look at a budget as just a bunch of figures on a paper, but if you look at a budget, you can tell exactly what's happening with that organization and where they're going by looking at the line items. And so that's what I'm saying, is if I approve a budget that I have looked at that has $100,000 in it for advertising, and then at the end of the year, I see that only $5,000 was spent in advertising, that organization didn't go in the direction that I wanted it to go in the beginning, and that's, that was my concern.
We have a quarterly update that we're going to give you. My suggestion would be if, she needs to have the flexibility, I believe, to be able to do that. There are opportunities, and I think Cannes would probably be an example. Things come up in the middle of the year, opportunities present themselves as they do to all of us. Our responsibility is to meet the budget and get as much visibility for the city as possible, and to get as much business into the city as we possibly can. The suggestion for me would be that when we meet on a quarterly basis and update, if there are variations from that, that we bring that to you in that report.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Along that item, and I'm going to switch over to something else before David goes on, it's that, you know, I, as Mary Jo stated, I think it is extremely important to let these departments have flexibility. The Cons is an example, there's, I'm sure that happens weekly, monthly, where these things, these opportunities exist, and what I don't want to do is have the council start micromanaging, to use an overused word, its departments, and take away the creativity. That's what I don't want to see happen. So I'm very happy with the way it's written, and I think the check and balance is there. And with the, I got to think, what do you guys call now, the budget? And I think, I think that just adds.
Budget and Programs Committee.
Yeah, that adds an extra layer of responsibility, so I'm certainly happy with that. But I would like to ask, and Linda, I would assume you're the one to answer this, if I understand this correctly, you're proposing to remove the special events from your budget. Now, is that from the 1.5? Okay, in the, in the past, how much of that 1.5 has been used for special events?
The first year that we did Rocktoberfest, two years ago, it cost us $95,000 to produce. That came out of our advertising and promotion dollars. We've done Elvis one year, and that cost us $65,000. Last year, we went into Rocktoberfest assuming that we would be able to find the outside financial sponsors that we needed, and they weren't forthcoming. We spent approximately $187,000 on Rocktoberfest, which included hiring a, an event organizer, bringing in all of the performers, the air to bring them in, the stage, the whole thing. So that came in out of our advertising budget, it was not something we had anticipated spending. When we committed to Rocktoberfest in March, when we came before the city council, we made the commitment to the performers. Then, so we tried desperately, we had fundraisers trying to help us, our two media sponsors were contacting their corporate sponsors, the money just wasn't out there last year. That's why the decision is very rightfully made, that any events that are to be done again, they are over and above our budget, we either find outside sources of funding or they're not done.
And Chris, if I could add, that one of the very reasons we made that decision is because when those dollars got switched over to Rocktoberfest, they were taken directly out of media spending. So we lost media value, I mean, I don't mean lost, but I'm just saying, it had a direct impact. And again, that's one of the reasons, we just don't want that to be a consideration of the tourism budget, because we need to keep our advertising dollars and our PR dollars where they are.
And while that is true, we did have over 1.5 million impressions on Rocktoberfest, whether it was through the website, the advertising we did. So there was a little bit of a balance there, but Michael's absolutely right, is that we had to use our advertising dollars, and we don't want to be put in that position again.
So if the council goes along with what you're saying, we've put, we put additional monies back into your aver- we've put, we put additional monies back into your advertising, well, however you want to do it. We put additional monies that you have been spending on special events back in, into your budget. Is that correct? Because you're not doing special events.
Right, it would just, the money that's in our advertise, I mean, in our, in our budget is specifically for advertising, not for special events.
Correct. But, but in the past, you, you have not, you've used it for special events. So we are putting, so you will be getting.
Exactly.
Additional advertising dollars because you're not having to put it forth towards special events.
We're actually restoring it. It actually reduced the media spending for two years by that amount.
I, I understand, okay.
So we're simply restoring, we're putting it back.
Okay, and, and, and then, then, then the, then the next comment is the, the, the special events, I think, are important. I think they've been important. You allude to the fact that they've, that they, that they've been important, you don't want to necessarily see them go away. But will you take the lead in organizing them as you have in the past? And not necessarily budgeting dollars to make them happen, but will you take the lead in bringing them back to us? Will you be the contact person that, say, if the Elvis thing is, is to say, if the Elvis thing goes again, that you would, as the Tourism Bureau, organize that, be responsible for organizing that, but without putting any funding towards it?
This is a conversation that is continuing with our ad hoc committee. If we have something that has our name on it, we want to be able to make sure it's to our standards. There's, 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 you know, one opinion that it should be outside organizers and, you know, such as the Bikers Weekend or any of the other private events that are held in town. Really, I can't give you an answer right now on that. The, the majority of the committee is not in support of us doing any special events at all.
If I could add, and here's an example, and, and this might be a good, a good example, Linda. Next week, the Wyndham is going to ask with regard to Ms. Teen, you recall that from last year. Now, there's a base amount they're going to ask for. Now, the logical person to work with them on that, because there's some special things that have to occur, would be tourism. Now, Linda has indicated, and she's told the group, she's like, for example, she's very willing to do it, however, she doesn't have the staff or capacity to do it, so it'll be, they'd have to hire that. And it's roughly an extra 20 or 30,000. So that would have to be part and parcel of the request for it to actually work.
Just to clarify, what we see the Bureau's role is in supporting the visibility of the events, any public relations that would go along with the event, and the things that they can do with the existing staff that they have. They would not, however, be responsible for the logistics of the event, which are very time consuming, and that's what would be included in the plan to the promoter.
And that, and that's not what, what I'm asking. Let me, let me try it again.
That's a resource.
Right now, in, in the past events, I used Rocktoberfest, Elvis, to name two. Those were generated through the Bureau of Tourism by Linda. Will Linda's, will you still be generating those things? In, in essence, will, will you seek, as an, as an, as a person or as a bureau, seek people to do those events?
We can.
You can or can't?
Can.
You can.
We can. You know, one of the things I, I'd like to, to stress, and these are the only two special events that, that we do. And, and I'm very blessed with a, a staff that believes that we have to make things happen, and that's how Rocktoberfest and a Weekend with the King came about. We, we don't believe in sitting back and waiting and hoping the business comes our way. We believe in being proactive and trying to make things happen. The, you know, that was a whole, the whole reason for, for putting on these events, and we were very, we're very fortunate that they've been as successful as they were. Rocktoberfest, after its second year, has been named one of the top 100 events in North America by the American Bus Association. Certainly, I'm, I'm assuming there's rock and roll organizers out there. You know, I, I don't have those connections, but I can certainly look. And Elvis, yes, I know that there are some people that were interested, but not in doing it alone. So I'd have to follow through with them.
The only thing that, 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 you know, I'm looking at hotel people here. I mean, we've got Main Street, and I know they're listed on your committee, but is the response that we're getting from Main Street, from Uptown, I mean, I mean, what is their reaction to that essentially not, that factor potentially not being there? Someone to generate these, these activities? I mean, hotels are one thing, I certainly understand that, hotel rooms. But, but there, you know, there's also another component, now, sales tax through restaurants and retail sales. And, and so I'm wondering if, you know, are we overlooking that in, in, in not having you do certain, do certain things? And Linda, I'm not talking about, in the past, you have run the event, and I understand that that's not what you're asking to do. And I, I do not have a problem with you not running the event. But it needs, as David said, it needs to be to a level, I mean, you need to be sure of the level, and it needs somebody to be the, the generator, the spark plug to get it going. And that's, and you have certainly always been that.
And I would like to continue to be the Kickstarter for that spark plug.
Yeah, that's, and, and that's.
The restaurants, et cetera, are not aware yet that it's a possibility these events may not occur. Excuse me, I misspoke.
I'm sorry, Joy Meredith is a part of our ad hoc committee as well and represents Main Street, as is Matthew Tullow. Everyone is in support of special events coming to the city. And certainly, there has to be sort of a clearinghouse to, if promoters come in or if we are able to establish relationships with promoters, as we have, for example, with Randy of Bike, of the Bike Weekend, where they can come in and handle the event through the promoter. If we can find those people, if Linda can find those people, if the retailers can find those people, whoever can bring those promoters in, we see the Bureau's role as being able to help clear the way, to help support it in terms of visibility, and to come to us as a collective community for help and assistance in making all of these events a success.
Which is really what's happened in the past, I think. So, yeah, so all I'm saying is, I'd like the effort to, to continue as it has continued and not draw a line here that says, no, Linda, you can't do this anymore. That's, that's what I don't want to say.
No, it has to be funding only, funding. And, and also, time spent on logistics of an event, that's where coordinators come in. They're very, they're very time consuming, and that's what a promoter does.
Our concern is we, we don't see the Bureau being the producer. That's what it comes down to, very simply. The idea generator, the supporter, you know, at all levels, absolutely. But our concern comes when the Bureau becomes a producer and may in fact become a competitor to another potential producer who's bringing an event to town.
And I don't have a problem with that. So I think now we're all talking the same thing, so I, I understand what you're talking about. No, I have a concern.
Okay, Mr. Puyer.
And my, my, my concern is, David, and you can help with this process, there are going to be special requests coming now to the City Council for special events. There may be more. You're generating a whole new process to develop ideas. And being in a very, very difficult budget year, we're already coming the next, next week, the Ms. Teen, that as well as you can, project for us the events that are out there, the potential events, and really help us with that timeline. So we've got a pretty good feeling of what kind of numbers we might be dealing with, and then certainly our opportunity to measure them, like Mike said. I think that's going to be very important for us.
And that would be, will be the purpose when this group, the expanded group, comes back to you in probably an April, May timeframe for next year's fiscal budget. They're going to lay out everything that we see on the horizon or could think of, and so council will know that's part of the mix if they want to do so.
So is the end result, Chris, is questioning that we are going to have a Rocktoberfest or we're not going to have a Rocktoberfest?
Potentially, if someone wants to do it.
It comes down to a funding issue. Right now, it's not in Linda's budget, but City Council could make the decision that they feel it's important enough as an event to do this extra funding. And then that would, and part of that would be the dollars that Linda would need to have someone help to coordinate it.
First of all, I'd like to say how pleased I am to see this collaboration. You know, on some of these issues that are outlined in the summary of the agreement, they were quite contentious issues. And to see everyone at the table calm, some even smiling, I thi, I think it's a good thing, and it says how far we have come on these issues and with the level of discussion that we have experienced. I, well, I'll go through a couple of these things. First of all, Linda, I, I am very pleased to hear that you are stop, going to stop referring to, to C's. And I think that that's really important, how we see ourselves. When it comes to some of these special events, I think there's a difference between, well, obviously, special events and promotion and tourism. And I think it's really important that this committee has worked on that, and they've come to us and saying, yes, we are the professionals in this area, and we see the distinction, and these are our recommendations. When it comes to some of these special events, I think that they are very good events for the community. They're good, feel-good events. They, they generate community spirit. They don't put heads in beds, and I think it's important for us to draw that distinction between some things are good PR for the, for the city and others put heads in beds. And we know the difference between the two. After we did that first year with, with Rocktoberfest, which was an excellent response to a crisis situation that we were experiencing, and you showed tremendous creativity in bringing that to us, trying to, you know, to, to fill the gap. But by that second year, I really believe that someone else should have been doing that, and it really wasn't the work of the Bureau. However, I think it's still a good event. I go out there and I have a great time, and whatever I can do to support that event, if we can get some sponsors, I'll be there to do, to do my part, that's for sure. I think that the post-event report is really important, and I think I see that kind of mentioned in here and not directly as a post-event report, but as long as you have that, so we can have that evaluation process following each event. And Linda, your comments, positioning ourselves as a destination. Would you just say a little bit more about that, what, what that really means, please?
A destination is a, a location that has it all. So you don't have to go outside of that destination for anything else. Many of the resorts will consider themselves a resort destination, is self-contained. So when you promote Palm Springs as a destination, hey, we've got it all. You don't need to go away to do things, it's all within the city. So when we use that word destination, it's come, stay here, and enjoy everything. Does, does that answer your question?
Yes, well said. I just wanted to hear you say it again. Thank you.
I just like the way she talks.
Yeah. Would you also just give us a, a brief explanation of how the Ms. Teen USA came to us la, last year and the circumstances, because I think it's important for the council to hear that.
They had been in South Padre, Texas for about five years. And the Convention Center had an opportunity to have a large citywide convention come in last minute. They, they pretty much asked Ms. Teen to leave. So when they approached the Convention Center in the Wyndham Hotel, there was approximately two months before the scheduled event, which was televised on NBC. They came with their, you know, hats in hand. We did not have to put up any kind of fees for them. They had their own event organizer who went around the city, working on special venues, meals for the girls, for the judges, transportation, entertainment, the whole nine yards. We did a lot in working with the PR side of it. So as far as what they, what they came to, they were, you know, two hours from LA, so they have all of their, their services are so close here. The, the figures was, that, were that, there was something like 35 million viewers. 30-second spot on primetime TV is approximately $250,000. We had over nine minutes of Palm Springs exposure. So it was an excellent event in that it was a little travelogue on Palm Springs. It also positioned Palm Springs as a destination for young people to come to as well, which was a whole new area for us to be able to, to promote.
And it was in August.
And once again, they want to have it in August.
Now, what, what I'm hearing as a resort, result of the discussion regarding the special events is that you are willing to be a resource because you're here and you have the history. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. With Ms. Teen, though, I would be expected to be the lead liaison.
Yeah, that's a difference.
And that's through the Miss Universe Organization. So, you know, once again, we, that's not consistent, really, with the amount of work that we would be expected to do through the Ms. Teen, to get the Ms. Teen on track because they are, you know, asking for some upfront funds, which they call site funding. And we would be doing all of the work for them in lieu of, in lieu of giving them additional funds where they would bring their own event organizer in. We would be expected to do that for them. So that, that's arranging for over 2,000 free hotel rooms and, and all the venues and everything else. So it's been made perfectly clear by the Miss Universe Organization that we would be the lead on that.
Okay. And I guess part of the point that I, I also want to make is that sometimes these, these opportunities come to us at the last minute. There isn't a lot of time, a lot of leeway, when we have a chance to really debate these issues. We either have to take it or, or, or forego that opportunity, which goes back, I think, to one of the comments you were making, Chris, about the flexibility. But even with that, those issues have always been brought back to us. As I look at the budget and where we stand right now, I think we're in a very difficult situation. And I don't see how we can make a commitment for more money at this point based upon all the uncertainties that we are experience, experiencing. I do want to say to you that I agree with the comments that you've made. This is our lifeline, and if we are to just maintain where we are at some point, wherever we see the opportunity, we're going to have to make an increase in investment in what we know works for us. Except right now, making that decision and giving that direction before we even have any idea what the real picture looks like, I think is very difficult. But I think everyone understands the work of tourism, it is our only industry. We believe in it, we believe in you, who have, who are consistently supportive of this city in so many ways. And let's just hope that things work out for us in the next few weeks with some of these proposals that are going to be coming to us.
There's two other quick items, council. On the, the last bullet point you have is currently we had a five-year term on the contract. What we're suggesting is that if, in fact, we're going to do a five-year term, I, I think we need to have some very specific performance measures in there like we did for the SMG and the Convention Center contract. In the alternative, what I'd like to suggest, since funding may not be at the level they want, is to have the flexibility to do one-year contracts. In essence, the terms of the contract remain the same. The only thing that will be discussed and differ every year is the base amount. And that gives council the ability to add to that as they see fit, depending upon the circumstances. So I would like a little guidance, if you'd prefer a five-year fixed with no ability to terminate, or if you would like a year-to-year contract with basically the points being the same, just the number changing every year.
Okay, if I could just add one thing. You know, on the SMG, we had some specific criteria that were developed over a period of time in terms of the performance criteria. And the current draft of the, this tourism agreement does not have very objective criteria that, from my standpoint, really work as performance criteria. The one-year, if you're doing a one-year, you don't really need to worry about having a lot of performance criteria because it is something that you get to review every year based upon what you think of the performance. year based upon what you think of the performance. If you want to go with the five-year and performance criteria, we could have to do a little work on what that, those criteria might be. Because right now, it's not real obvious what they would be.
That's for it.
Mr. Mayor, on the original contract that was signed between the city and LMI and SMG bought out LMI, the performance criteria never judged the Bureau of Tourism on their own productivity. It was based on a certain percentage of an increase in TOT for the city of Palm Springs. So that just wasn't what we could bring to the city. It also included what the convention center could bring, what the individual hotels could bring, what the CVA could bring. So we were, so that contract was not really focused on what the Bureau of Tourism can do. In the PowerPoint presentation that y'all have in your notebook, you'll see our goals as far as the leads that we'll generate for the hotels, the amount of free advertising or promotions we'll have for the city. And that, of course, as we go through our marketing plan process, will, you know, be helped set by our committee. And, you know, perhaps that could be used as the performance criteria for the new contract.
What is our timeline for this contract?
The contract has expired. We've been going on extensions. But Troy, the current extension expires when, please?
The current extension expires the end of February. So the council would have to either extend that amendment for another period of time or finish this current negotiation so we have a new contract in place.
So we'd have two more council meetings to approve it before it ends.
Do you think if we were looking at a performance-based contract, that that's ample time to get back to us with the discussion with all the parties?
I would suggest that, as Linda noted, it's a little nebulous because there's other factors, the CVA, the convention bureau, et cetera. And that's part of the reason that this group will serve, in essence, as the performance. Because when they present a program at the beginning of the fiscal year that you approve, you know, Linda's and my task is to implement that. And so as we have these quarterly reports, and when they come back to you the following year, they're going to say, yes, we did these things as said, these were the successes. That in and of itself will be the performance criteria and the judgment at that point.
So then we're back to just the basic contract, the five-year?
Now, that's not to say you couldn't do, you're right, a basic contract for five years with the proviso that council appropriates the dollars every year. That could change.
Counsel? Not everyone at once, please.
I have a question.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Oh.
No, I'm sorry. Did I?
That's all right. You've already done it.
Well, this is totally separate from anything we've been discussing. I just came across this Senate bill 652 in the back. And I wanted to have more information on that. I just have a question. Is that, is that a TOT or that is a additional $2 room charge?
What they are doing is a, the hotels here have already assessed themselves to help expand the convention center. That is of a city in Virginia that they are assessing themselves. And it is specifically going to promote tourism, leisure tourism, for that historic area of Virginia.
So it's not adding $2 on to a hotel room plus a TOT tax?
No, it is adding that additional $2 on per room that is specifically targeted for marketing.
Just give it on three points.
This plus.
That's an interesting concept.
As Howard said, it gives them $3.6 million in additional funds.
That's a very interesting concept, too.
Anything with legislation, I knew she would gravitate to it.
Mr. Mayor.
Hello? Yes, Mr.?
The city manager was looking for a recommendation.
Yes.
And hence, final point, I will agree with the staff recommendation on the term of the agreement to be year-to-year on basis if longer term desired. So I would, that is where I'm moving in my...
Year-to-year?
Yeah, as David has requested.
Is that the direction you want to give, counsel?
Just a question. It goes on in that to say that if a longer term is desired, though, than an annual performance method be established, or essentially, I paraphrase it. So is that what you're thinking, Steve?
Yes.
Do we have a subcommittee for this contract? I know we did the other SMG. No, no, we don't, not on the tourism. Not on tourism.
Oh, yes, we do. Yeah, we do.
I do think that's on Tricia's chart.
Yeah, we do.
And I believe my name might be directed.
Yes.
And yours, Mr. Mayor.
I know, not the one.
I would, I would think that if it's desirable, I know Linda would probably rather have a long-term contract, or her bosses would, anyway, that the, that we have the subcommittee take a look at that and see if there is a feasible way to incorporate the performance issues, especially since I'm not on that subcommittee.
Right, yes. My point exactly.
Before I vote on that, could I know who's on that subcommittee?
You know, and if I could...
With Stephen Ross.
Yes.
If I could just say one thing about, about the performance criteria, because of the way the LMI contract was written, we've established our own through nobody's telling us to do it, through nobody's direction. But this is what we've done internally. So we know that we're doing a good job for our constituents. So I just thought I'd kind of pat ourselves on our backs there.
Mr. Reddy, you will make sure that the mayor and I...
Is that the committee?
Engage. We are the committees.
We are the committee.
I'll make a mental note of that.
Okay. One thing that you could do, I mean, again, we have a pretty limited time to get the current agreement together. We could go ahead and repair a contract that's a one-year agreement during the course of that year because there are a number of things that are changing here in this committee and so forth. If you want to develop performance criteria, at the end of the first year, the performance criteria could be inserted into the contract. And then from then on, you would have it and you'd have plenty of lead time. It could be if you started into having that conversation now, you're the nature of things, you won't get it done.
But that takes a little pressure off of the committee, the subcommittee. And he goes, okay.
We could even put something into the contract saying that there, we would engage in that effort.
I think that's good.
Is, currently, the SMG contract for the convention center is a five-year with performance, right?
Right.
Is there, is there any potential to link these two contracts to, not necessarily into one contract, that's not what I'm saying, but to link the terms so that they happen at the same time? So...
You mean like, for example, the performance, in the five-year agreement, there is a very specific performance review process and there's very specific criteria and there's actually a timeframe to do that. Now, it is possible that in a one-year agreement, or if it later becomes a longer agreement, again, the performance review process, a portion of it is annual and a portion occurs at the three-year mark. And if you wanted it a coordinated process, we could try and create language that would do that.
I would think that would be advantageous to have that. And also have the terms of the contract, since we've been going on extensions right now, we could, what I'm trying to do is adjust the dates, if nothing else, so the dates at least align. And so, I mean, even though they're not the one contract, the milestones are measured at the same time and the termination of the contract is at the same time.
That actually, if you were trying to make all of that align, then the first year of this contract would have to be a different period of time than one year. Because the only way...
And that's what I'm asking.
Right. The only way to get it to align would be to maybe make it slightly longer, I mean, however the dates work out.
I mean, instead of a year, we could do, you know, I mean, rather make it shorter, you could make the first year longer.
Right.
So there's, there are different ways, but to get to the same point. And I just think there's advantages that, to doing it that way when you're dealing with virtually the same parent company. I mean, the contracts are with SMG, correct? Both contracts? Yeah. I would think that would make sense.
If we find that advantageous, can we not make that adjustment within the second portion of the contracting process?
You could do that also.
Yeah.
Same thing. Okay, let's do it.
Counselor, to wrap up, there's two quick caveats here. One is during this transition period, when they were moving into the new visitor center, there was approximately a $17,000 increase that tourism had to bear because of the rent increases in the current. What I would ask in this current year is that we make them whole on that $17,000 for the important reason that you have funded Easter Bowl in your budget at $15,000 because of the amount of room nights. The $10,000 that Linda also gives Easter Bowl was part of her budget, which, because of this rent increase, she wouldn't have. So I would ask that I could bring an appropriation forward at a future time to make them whole on the $17,000. That's one, if you don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Only if she uses it for landscaping and a sign. And signage is something we have to deal with, indeed.
Okay. And they are completely into the new location.
Except for the signs. And secondly, what I would suggest also in the new contract, currently, we charge them for rent, it's actually just a pass-through. Actually, we're paying ourselves. But since we now own the building, what I would suggest is that we don't charge them as a fund, enterprise fund rent. We just, in essence, it's our building. So that gives them an additional roughly $12,000 to $15,000 a year, extra spending dollars within their $1,408. So it's just an additional small amount they have. So that change we could make is part of the new contract. And finally, council members, I would just say that the goal of this was three things, accountability, stakeholder input, and flexibility. And I think these points reach those goals and I thank you for your input.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, we'll take a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back. Okay, we'll take a 10-minute recess, and then we'll come back.
Good evening. My name is Gabriella Dow, and I am with GovPartner, the e-government firm that was created by Berryman &amp; Henninger, the firm that George mentioned that has served more than 400 cities throughout the United States. Specifically, here at Palm Springs, what we see as the purpose of this project, and similar to the cities that Councilman Mills had a chance to visit, Rancho Santa Margarita and Laguna Hills, cities also like Sunnyvale, which originally created the software system, the online permitting component of the system you're going to see was actually created by Microsoft. Sunnyvale teaming up with Microsoft when the community up in Silicon Valley went to the city of Sunnyvale and said, "It is taking us way too long to build our technology campuses up here. Every day that we do not get those campuses open, we're losing millions of dollars." And these were the Microsoft, the Sun Microsystems. You can imagine back in the late 1990s what the era was like back there for Sunnyvale. So actually, the online permitting project and software system that will now be implemented here was a partnership with Microsoft. They took the developers that had just done the website for the Gap.com and took their e-commerce expertise, along with the folks at the Building Department, at the Community Development Department at Sunnyvale. So that's the genesis of the software that we now were entrusted by the city of Sunnyvale to take out to other and implement in other cities, and we've been doing that for the last four years. Now, the picture that you see up there shows, obviously, there's different technology systems that already exist at cities. Obviously, you already have a website. You do have different technology tools that you can utilize, and you also have the community with their needs, and you have the business community who needs to have plans processed as quickly as possible. We're not only going to be implementing a permit tracking system, but also a request management system. So even the members of the public who want to know what has been done about the barking dog that I reported, I asked for the trees to be trimmed. Can I at least get an answer on what's happening? The software is also going to help handle that. But we believe that technology cannot bring these types of changes in communities in and of itself. And so really, our purpose for this project and our approach is always to empower the government staff to work with the city so that they can improve their internal processes, and the technology then reflects a more streamlined system, and then provides better tools for staff to be able to do their work, and then provides tools for the public to conduct self-service, check the status of their plans online, so that if they're on the job at 5:00 in the morning and want to see if the plans have been approved, they can go to the Internet, and they can get the status there. Or if it's 10:00 at night, they can do it if they're comfortable using the Internet, and they can check whatever time is convenient for them, with the confidence that whenever they do go online, as soon as the folks in the Community Development Department have approved the plans and have entered into their own computer system, these plans are approved and have finished entering their comments, as soon as that is entered in at the computers here at the city, it is instantaneously reflected on the city's website. So now, you're going to have information sharing all in real time, and that really has been quite a benefit to all of the cities that we've worked with. This overview slide that I have here talks about the three different software systems that the city has been reviewing. The first one is called Community Development Partner, and this is an internal management system that will be used by the Building Department and by the Planning Department, and it also will operate off of a centralized land database that we will create with the city, so that you have all of your parcel information, all of the information that you get from the county with all of the assessor's data, and so that you have all of the addresses in one place, so that when planning is working on a project, they are working off of, obviously, the same address, the same APN information as the Building Department will be. So they're pulling from this one centralized land database. The permitting system is going to input all of the applications for permits. It automatically calculates fees. It assures that nothing falls through the cracks, and it also helps staff to streamline their work and helps them to communicate better with the Planning Department, with any of the departments that are involved in, say, the plan-checking process, because through the software system, you create accountability. The different departments are assigned to provide their input and their comments, and all of that has been tracked into one system. So if the city manager gets a phone call, what is the status of this project? He doesn't have to take down a message, walk down to the department, try to see if somebody's not at lunch at that moment. He can just go into the computer system and pull up the status with confidence that what he's seeing in there is as of that second. If it says that somebody has not checked the plans yet, then at least he knows who is supposed to have checked them, who to go and talk with, or if they have been checked, the comments will be in the computer. The second system is called Permit Partner, and this is the online component of this whole effort. Permit Partner will allow the public to obtain simple permits through the Internet, and I was actually just talking with the city of Laguna Hills recently, and they let me know that over the recent holiday, one of their local, I think it's a plumbing company, pulled 30 permits in one sitting, and this was during the holiday when City Hall was not open. And so it's a process, again, this is for permits that are normally called over-the-counter permits, your water heaters, your re-roofs, whatever permits do not require plans that the city wants us to place online, but this is complete with credit card payment. So the funds will automatically be deposited into the city's merchant bank account, and the public can go ahead and make their payment with a credit card. So it's all instantaneous, the credit card is verified, and there's a record that can be stored through the city's website online. If it's a member of the public doing a remodel, if they ever want to go back on there and get their information, it stores the information that has to do with their permit. Obviously, this is all secure, encrypted, and no credit card information is stored on the system and certainly not by the city. So that's Permit Partner, and that is also the software system that will present the status of plan checks online, and I maybe can show just that portion in just a second. Request Partner is the request management software system. We actually just had the state of Hawaii sign up to use this also to track all of the requests for service, and this is the software system that George alluded to earlier that was selected after a very rigorous RFP competitive process with ICMA, the International City Managers Association, and also with a panel of cities and counties throughout the country and several state municipal leagues. They all came together and really felt that they needed to recommend to their city members that they have a consolidated way, streamlined way to keep track of all of the requests that come into the city, because the customers, the public, really deserves excellent service, and that's really what the community has come to expect from the private sector and, of course, now also from the public sector. So that's a system that's going to be a centralized database to keep track of all of the requests for service that come in, and again, all the information is in real time, so that the public can also check the status of whatever happened with the ponding water that I reported, or the pothole, or whatever the case may be. So that's a quick overview on the software systems, and you see there that we also show, obviously, we see the consulting as a very big part of it, and that will involve training every single staff member that's going to be using the system. So we're very big on making sure that all staff know how to use the software, and then throughout the entire process, as we work with the departments, as we work with staff, making sure that the software reflects the processes that the department managers want to be in place, working very closely with the city manager's office and all of his staff.
Gabriella, at this point, I'd say, why don't we show the slides on the cost of the system, and if the council has any specific questions about how either the components function, we can go into those in more detail.
Excellent.
And as Gabriella is bringing up that information, I might inform the council, since we have several new members to council, that as part of the current-year capital improvement program, the council did allocate $180,000 in the capital program budget for an online e-permitting system.
I'm actually going to hand this over to George so that he can address the different cost factors.
What we have done is we have priced the systems based upon the population. We have kind of a formula we work through, but we have worked closely with staff, and not going through all of this information in detail, but you can see that the bottom-line number here, originally for the systems we discussed with the city, is normally $210,000 by our fees, and then we added then, at a later time, the Request Partner module onto our discussions as well, and that's $7,500. But Mr. Bootslaw, being the negotiator that he is, and made it very, very clear that the city was working within some budget constraints, so we have committed that we would stick to the budget numbers that the city originally looked at several months ago, that we had been talking about with the city. So I've made that commitment to Mr. Bootslaw that we would stick within that $180,000 budget number, and the only thing we would ask to add would be the Request Partner portion that was not in the original conversations that we had, and normally, that's priced a little bit higher, too, but I kept it down to a lower number.
You want to address the annual fees for the hosting services?
There is an annual fee, and really, what that covers is the hosting of the Request Partner system, and that is $500 per month, and that does provide for an unlimited user license for as many staff, if you have any subcontractors that you want to manage, maybe the folks that pick up the trash, or any other contractors that the city works with, you can give them access also with limited basis. And then the software will be hosted at a secure data center. It's the same data center that's used by the U.S. State Department by commercial, private sector, so that the staff here does not have to be maintaining these systems.
An important part of that, just quickly, is that as far as the monthly maintenance fee, too, it really obligates us to make sure that you're always receiving the most current, up-to-date information as well, so that if there's any updates to the system or software from any of our other clients that we've identified, we include that as part of the updates as well, and it deals with all of the other hosting requirements that we have for the server, so.
That's an excellent point. That also includes the unlimited support. the city wants us to place online. But this is complete with credit card payment. So the funds will automatically be deposited into the city's merchant bank account, and the public can go ahead and make their payment with a credit card. So it's all instantaneous. The credit card is verified, and there's a record that can be stored through the city's website online. If it's a member of the public doing a remodel, if they ever want to go back on there and get their information, it stores the information that has to do with their permit. Obviously, this is all secure encrypted, and no credit card information is stored on the system and certainly not by the city. So that's Permit Partner, and that is also the software system that will present the status of plan checks online. And I maybe can show just that portion in just a second. Request Partner is the request management software system. We actually just had the state of Hawaii sign up to use this also to track all of the requests for service. And this is the software system that George alluded to earlier that was selected after a very rigorous RFP competitive process with ICMA, the International City Managers Association, and also with a panel of cities and counties throughout the country and several state municipal leagues. They all came together and really felt that they needed to recommend to their city members that they have a consolidated way, streamlined way to keep track of all of the requests that come into the city. Because the customers, the public, really deserves excellent service. And that's really what the community has come to expect from the private sector and of course now also from the public sector. So that's a system that's going to be a centralized database to keep track of all of the requests for service that come in. And again, all the information is in real time so that the public can also check the status of whatever happened with the ponding water that I reported or the pothole or whatever the case may be. So that's a quick overview on the software systems. And you see there that we also show, obviously, we see the consulting as a very big part of it. And that will involve training every single staff member that's going to be using the system. So we're very big on making sure that all staff know how to use the software. And then throughout the entire process, as we work with the departments, as we work with staff, making sure that the software reflects the processes that the department managers want to be in place, working very closely with the city manager's office and all of his staff.
Gabriella, at this point, I'd say, why don't we show the slides on the cost of the system? And if the council has any specific questions about how either the components function, we can go into those in more detail.
Excellent.
And as Gabriella is bringing up that information, I might inform the council, since we have several new members to council, that as part of the current year capital improvement program, the council did allocate $180,000 in the capital program budget for an online e-permitting system.
I'm actually going to hand this over to George so that he can address the different cost factors.
What we have done is we have priced the systems based upon the population. We have kind of a formula we work through. But we have worked closely with staff and not going through all of this information in detail. But you can see that the bottom line number here originally for the systems we discussed with the city is normally $210,000 by our fees. And then we added then at a later time the Request Partner module onto our discussions as well, and that's $7,500. But Mr. Bootslaw, being the negotiator that he is, and made it very, very clear that the city was working within some budget constraints. So we have committed that we would stick to the budget numbers that the city originally looked at several months ago that we had been talking about with the city. So I've made that commitment to Mr. Bootslaw that we would stick within that $180,000 budget number. And the only thing we would ask to add would be the Request Partner portion that was not in the original conversations that we had. And normally, that's priced a little bit higher too, but I kept it down to a lower number.
You want to address the annual fees for the hosting services?
There is an annual fee, and really what that covers is the hosting of the Request Partner system. And that is $500 per month. And that does provide for an unlimited user license for as many staff, if you have any subcontractors that you want to manage, maybe the folks that pick up the trash or any other contractors that the city works with, you can give them access also with limited basis. And then the software will be hosted at a secure data center. It's the same data center that's used by the U.S. State Department by commercial private sector so that the staff here does not have to be maintaining these systems.
An important part of that, just quickly, is that as far as the monthly maintenance fee too, it really obligates us to make sure that you're always receiving the most current, up-to-date information as well. So if there's any updates to the system or software from any of our other clients that we've identified, we include that as part of the updates as well. And it deals with all of the other hosting requirements that we have for the server.
That's an excellent point. That also includes the unlimited support so that anytime any staff wants to call their gov partner project manager, if they forgot how to run a report, or they just want some extra assistance on follow-up training, that is also covered during the monthly fee. And I should mention that although the contracts with our cities require 30-day written notice if they don't want to use the software anymore, it's not something that they found valuable despite that. And of course, with the ability to have all of their data already at any time that they need, despite that, we do have a 100% success track record where every single city that is using the software system or that implemented continues to use it. So we have seen the nightmare stories, especially George working with Berryman and Henninger and the many cities that they have served throughout California and the rest of the country. We've seen the stories of software that gets implemented. One person knew how to use it, and that person leaves the city. And it, maybe I shouldn't be bringing up, but every city has experienced that. So we're very sensitive to that and to making sure that the software gets implemented, that it is used well, that it does serve its purpose, and that it is a long-term solution that you can then grow with. And if you ever in the future want to integrate your GIS solution with this system, we do have cities that have gone that route. I was just at the city of Gardena council meeting last night, and they approved a project where they're going to be integrating our e-government software with their telephone-based system as the city of Diamond Bar already has done. So we have an open business philosophy, which means this is not proprietary software. You can integrate it with other technology solutions that you bring into the city. And that's also part of what we see as having a long-term solid solution that grows and that is not something that gets phased out or that staff end up not using.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Hopefully, the council's had the opportunity to review both booklets that were sent out to them. I think if you read these booklets, you can see that this is a very robust system. It has a suite of applications that will not only make us more customer service-oriented, but will improve the internal efficiencies as well as the tracking capability of our staff to be more accountable to the citizens that we serve. I think Mr. Wince and Ms. Dow have gone over the presentation with some detail. Obviously, we would have given you a much lengthier presentation had we had time, but I think you have the general sense of the program and its purpose. And with that, we will be open for any questions. But we are seeking direction if this is something that the council is interested in. And as the Budget Task Force had recommended to council, we would like to bring it back to you at a legislative session for formal approval.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. Who, once you've inputted all of the data, then who is responsible for keeping that data? Because this is going to be a huge job. I mean, do we have one of our MIS people who are going to be just dedicated to this?
Yeah, I'd have Gabriella talk about how they do it with other cities.
The Community Development Partner system will reside on a server at the city. And so that's something where we will configure the server, we will work with your team, and we've met with your IT manager here. So that is one system that will reside here at the city. And then all of the different staff at the community development department will be entering the information. And of course, the system will be validating what everybody is entering to make sure that they're entering it correctly. And in many cases, data is entered through pulldown screens that we've created with the department. So it becomes a function of if you have new employees, it's very easy for them to learn the process in the community development department because they're just selecting from the pulldown lists that already exist on the screens. So that's Community Development Partner. The Permit Partner system, which is the e-commerce application, and the Request Partner system, both of those are hosted solutions. And those are the systems that reside at a commercial data center. So those are all maintained, and that's what you pay the monthly fee for. And IT staff don't have to worry about maintaining those, backing up the servers, updating the servers. And George mentioned that part of the monthly fee also includes enhancements that we're continually making to the software to add even more functionality so it doesn't get outdated. So staff don't have, we do all the 24/7 support, and we work with the dedicated team at Navisite. They have 15 data center facilities throughout the country. And again, this is a, we did not want to reinvent the wheel. This is a commercial data center, and that's where your data will be stored safely.
Mr. Poyet.
I would just, Troy, you asked a question, and I think absolutely, this is a wonderful, wonderful development. And I thank the previous council for authorizing $180,000 before, Chris, for his hard work, the Development Task Force, and for becoming more business-friendly. I think it's very exciting for the city. So absolutely, I would suggest moving forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes, I was chair of the Development Task Force, and this is one of the items that kind of came out of that task force, being more business-friendly and being able to track the different projects and permits through the Internet. And I was wondering if Mr. Evans has had a chance to review the software in light of what the view that the Development Task Force had on tracking projects and permitting in the planning department? If you had a chance to look at the software and what your report would be on that? Because I think that's a key component of what we're hoping for this system to do.
Yes, I've spent some time online with Sunnyvale, watching their system, looking at it. And more importantly, we have a former employee that used to work there, Councilman Mills remembers her, Dana Sonnenberg-Wolff. And she says the system was very, very helpful for the planners. So that's a quick report and was validated by somebody that no longer works there. So she had no allegiance to that city, but said it was a very, very helpful system.
Thank you.
One of the things that we were looking at was being able to initially get an idea of a timeline on how long your project was going to take and different steps. And then possibly, we even had an idea that maybe something would start to turn from blue to yellow to red as it got aged and was maybe moving into an area where the city wasn't following through as quickly as we had set the benchmarks for. Is that a part of this software? How is the tracking of different permitting and projects done online?
Yeah, going back to the Development Task Force, we were talking about matrices, basically to track the status of projects. I don't know if that can basically be done with this system, but what we can do is use it as a management tool to determine where a project is in the process, how old it is, whether or not it's been reviewed, what the last review date was. Maybe Gabriella or George can speak more specifically about how other cities use it as a project-tracking matrix to determine whether a project has slipped between the cracks or needs some attention.
One of the things that I can speak to, and actually, this goes back to the city of Sunnyvale. A process that they have is for the planning group to get together every week. And they do review the projects, enter information, not just plan check comments, but also just comments from all the different staff that are involved on a committee that they have put together. And they do meet each week, and they do have certain parameters for how long certain projects should take before they get approved. And so that's something that's partly, they use the software system to track all of that, and it's also a process that they have put into place. So one of the things that our consultants do when they come out and they meet with the city is they will, they'll work with the processes, obviously, that already exist at the city. But where they see some room for streamlining or recommending things that have worked at other cities, they can make some suggestions, and then the software system can be configured. Troy mentioned that the city is looking to put together specific matrices. And one of the things that we do is create custom reports as part of each implementation. So you have all of the data in the software system. And it is true, data is only as good as what is put into the system. So it's very important to train staff and make sure that they are using it. And we will look to the leadership to really let staff know this is an important project. You need to attend the training. You need to work with a consultant who's going to be spending time here onsite. But you will have all of this data in the system. And then it's just a matter of creating reports. And if there are certain triggers that you want the system to have within it, that's something that we can also do as part of the implementation.
Can the person who makes, who actually has the permit or the project, can they go online and see the status and see where their project stands, see where it is?
Absolutely. And that's one of the fundamental features of the system that we were attracted to is that it allows people to view the status of their application, the status of their permit, what the last comments were by the planner who's reviewing it or by the building inspector who went out and inspected the property. So to us, it's a real useful means of getting that information to the hands of the people who want to know what the status of their project is.
Exactly. And we will also consult and let you know, technology can do a lot of different things. And we'll share with the staff here in the departments. The city of Sunnyvale, again, as an example, used to post the status of plans as soon as any department had reviewed the plans. Those would be online immediately. They then decided that was creating too much confusion. Some of the members of the public thought they were done just by receiving that one approval. And so again, as a matter of process, that city decided to only post the plans once, the plan check comments, once all of the departments had reviewed them, to then let folks know, now you can go ahead and act. And so that's something that you'll decide how you want to do it here. But you'll be working with our consultants who will share the pros and cons of different options that you have. And that's how we'll make sure you have a solution that works for the community, but that also still works well for the department.
Mr. Mills.
As Mike had alluded to in the task force, we had a lot of discussion about what we felt the system needed to do. And one of the important things was that, as Mike mentioned, be able for a client to track his project. And I'll use planning as an example because it's probably the more complicated of the departments. And that would be, when you file an application, that application gets, would get a number and have a planner essentially assigned to it, which would be, that information would be available online. And if it's a zone change, for lack of a better, there's a process. And the process is, you know, architectural review, planning commission review, city council. And so, well, could all those things that it needs to happen be on that review chart? Plus, you could put in a potential date, and then you could have an actual date that it did happen. So it's feasible to have a person see what their anticipated project or milestones are all the way through the process and what the actual ones were. Okay? And you could do it application type by application type. Okay? So stop me if I say something that's not going to happen, okay? So, and then that can be customized per application, per department, however it needs to work. And obviously, it'll be modified as, just because of use. As you mentioned, some things work and some things don't.
Well, and one key word is, you mentioned to customize. Right now, what the system does is it does reflect the status of plan checks. It'll let the public know if the plans are in progress or if they have been approved, if they've been disapproved, and then they click to view all of the comments. I can't imagine a case, I guess, where there would not be comments. But if that was the case, if it was just a, yeah, it looks great, then it would just say, okay. As far as exactly what you're describing, there may need to be some level of customization to the software. And that's part of scoping out its technology. And again, it's not proprietary, so we can go ahead and work and tweak it and do whatever is needed to make sure the city gets what they need. But in some cases, we do have to scope additional time. I mentioned the city of Gardena where I was at last night. They reviewed the system, and they actually added on, I think it was about $32,000 worth of customizations once they got into the system. And that, a lot of that had to do with integrating the software with their phone system to do all sorts of things over the telephone. So to get exactly to what you're describing, I think would require a little bit of customization to the system.
Because I'm thinking in terms of, and what we had talked about before, is it becoming not only a user tool, a client tool, or a citizen's tool to track their projects, but also a management tool for a department head to see if his staff is doing their job, where a project is falling behind, and being able to track it that way. Because accountability of projects is one of the things that we felt needs to happen. And you also have a name of a contact person to deal with all the way through the entire project. So, and a means to be able to leave them notes online, not have to rely on phone calls all the time, which takes up everybody's time. And so, and you're not in your head thinking, all this will happen, which we can't have.
Well, on the internal side for management, that's already in there. As far as presenting those specific things online, that's not all part of the online portion. But the online portion grabs the information in real time from the internal management system. So it is very possible, even though we don't have cities that are doing that right now.
I think it's very important that we get what we want. And in the 180, however the breakdowns go, that we're getting what we want and the customization that we feel that we need. It would seem to me, and maybe you've done this already, that department by department, you need a, there needs to be representatives from those departments to sit down and figure out, maybe it's amongst, maybe it's complete staff amongst themselves, but you need some information before you even come out here as to what they're looking for the system to do. There's just seems like there's some prep work that needs to be done. Because I want to make sure that when we say yes, assuming we do, on this 180, that is encompassing every need that we see that we want coming out of the chute. Because I don't want to have to come back and deal with another $32,000. So if it's 180, that's great. If it's 190, you know, it's not great. But we want to get what we need. And so I think you need a, or Troy needs to put together, per department head, some organization that can look at the reports we've seen and determine, you know, how all this fits together and what they want. And more importantly, to get user buy-in. Because if these, the staff users, I mean, they've got a buy-in to the system or it is not going to work. And it needs to be friendly to them, just like it does to the people that are using it. So I think that's an important aspect of it. Another part is that one of the features that I think it needs to have and is a method to survey or to, when I say survey, I mean to provide a questionnaire. So when you go through the process, then either something sends a flag up and somebody mails you something and says, you know, were you happy with the system, da-da-da-da-da? Does it have that capability?
The Request Partner system allows staff to create any survey that they want. And you can email that to as many people. And the Community Development Partner system will have a database of all of the applicants. You'll have a database of all of your contractors. So you can even create custom surveys and send them out to your contractors, send them out to the applicants, or send them out to people within a certain part of the community.
Because I'm, I mean, we, digressing a little bit, we're dealing with a perception, I'll call it, of being business unfriendly. And I personally don't think it's what some people think it is, because it's nothing tangible. And this would be a system that you could create tangible results as it's being used. And everyone that uses the system, that does the online part anyway, will have the opportunity to respond, good, bad, or indifferent. So I think that's an important aspect of it. And I bet that's why you tagged that thing on on the bottom, didn't it?
The Request Partner. One quick thing to note, though, is that we always do scoping before every project. And then part of the implementation is our consultant rolling up their sleeves and getting their behind the counter and actually starting the implementation. And I think we have found with every single project that a lot of things are uncovered as part of the implementation, that were not discovered during the scoping process. And that's when sometimes staff, oh, that's what you meant when you were asking about, you know, the fee ordinance. Or one staff person will say, our process is this. Another staff person may describe it in a different way. But it's not until it's actually being implemented and they're being asked to test. This is how it's going to work in the system, that the consultant uncovers a lot of issues, and then they get resolved in that moment. Maybe sometimes it's a different understanding of what the department's process is. Or sometimes they're just errors. We've found, we have found errors in what is being charged at the counter in certain cities that we've implemented and what the ordinance actually calls for. So all those things really do get resolved once the consultant is in there behind the counter. And you can't really get that in initial scoping. You know, for whatever reason, the staff don't really respond, and you get down to exactly what the system needs to do until they're actually testing the system. And there's a lot of back and forth that happens with the implementation.
From training, I understand you have initial training. As a new staff person comes on, do you train them individually as part of your, as part of your maintenance fee?
We go in phases, and it's all, it's a fixed cost, and we will not leave the project. And we're here on the go-live date. So our consultant is here when the staff are at the counter, a little nervous because they're actually entering everything live. And there's training that happens in phases throughout. So you'll have some staff that are actually going to be inputting different types of information or more information around the Request Partner system. You'll have some staff that are authorized to create surveys and to create the different request forms for the different issues. They need to know the system a little bit deeper than the staff who are just inputting information, or perhaps other staff who are really just going to be trained to get into the system and get answers to questions if the phone is ringing. But we don't leave the project until every single person is trained. But we don't leave the project until every single person is trained, and until we can bring another city to visit Palm Springs, and you are the showcase, just like you went and visited some of our other clients, and those cities can stay on, their city managers can come and visit and see this thing's in place, and it's moving right along.
It really is a relationship, and I think they have demonstrated, based on what I've seen in their other cities that have implemented this program, that they've established this relationship with those cities, and the staff actually is very helpful in training other city staffs. And I think it's a network of different cities that can join together, and we can learn from them, they can learn from us. And as Gabriella was mentioning, they would like us to be the showcase that other cities will come down to, to see how we've implemented the system, and I hope someday we can be that showcase, because the cities that we visited, I think they were extremely helpful, they're knowledgeable about the system, and they spoke very highly about how the system has helped them improve not only their internal processes, but also their relationship with the customer base they serve.
Yes. First of all, I would hope that we already have buy-in from all staff that would be involved in the, in the use of this program and equipment, that we're not looking at an administrative decision to purchase something that people haven't said, and that they don't feel comfortable with.
Well, in fact, in October of last year, I took a representative from every department that would be affected by this to the two cities. We evaluated onsite with those cities, as well as the EDC attended and members of the Development Task Force, to look at the application in a practical setting, how it's being used by the staff members there, and I asked every person to provide me their written comments as to their observations and their review of the system, and I must say that everybody was ultimately impressed by the functionality of the system. They not only felt it would be a great assistance to them in their job function, but also it would help improve the relationships we have with our customers.
Okay. Because going back to Chris's comment about the ultimate goal is to be business friendly, and we have a system that isn't truly functional, where we don't have the staff that's really bought into it, and of course, and it's not serving all the needs of the communities. I just want to make sure that if we're making this purchase, that we're all on the same page. I have a question regarding the time of input of, 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 of our local data to the time and approximation of actual functionality for, of the program, full usage.
You mean, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that. Oh, an implementation time?
Right.
The request partner system, for example, can be implemented between one and three months. And a lot, whenever we give ranges, it really depends on the type of response that we get. We assign the city, "Provide us all your fee information," or we give assignments to staff, we'll come down, meet with them, and have them gather. So, that's kind of what the spread is for. The online permitting can be implemented in about four months, and so you can decide if you want to go live with the online first. The internal management systems are really a nine-month effort, and that's, again, because of the different issues that are going to be uncovered, because the process has to be in there. It can be faster, and some cities have had us do it faster and sort of skip over certain parts, that they're just, they see functionality where they say, you know, "We don't need all the functionality that the system offers, and we really just need to get online within a certain amount of months." But I'll tell you, even though cities had us, still come back a few months after their go-live date and still work with them to then bring that functionality, that's not the best way to really do it. It's nice to have a whole smooth process and have a go-live date, and staff know, "We're done at this point." But because it is a consulting effort, and because it's not just technology that you flip the switch and you load it on a server, it does take quite a few months. And we will work with the city to decide, in terms of timeframe, what are the components that you want to be up and running first.
In terms of customize, because I, I see it really more so as a basic program, and that for our use, it's probably going to require quite a bit of customization. How long before, generally, some sort of timeline, before we realize how much we need to customize?
Well, maybe what I can go to very quickly is, can you see that up there?
Yes.
When we, it's really when we configure the system so that it's custom to the city, all of the different pull-down lists, like all of the different uses, and all of the different, the different statuses that you want to use here at the city, all of those descriptions, that is something that happens as part of the process. If we come across something where there's functionality that's being requested that the system does not provide, and one of the things that Councilman Mills described, which is additional interface of what this does to present it online, some of that does not exist in the system now, but it is something that we can add. So, as we do the implementation, and this, and that's really the only major thing, we do have some custom reports that we've been talking about, those things we can know right away, and we can say, "What you're describing is actually functionality that the system doesn't have right now." We can scope that, and we can let you know what it would be to add that. All of the other, quote, "customization" is really just configuring what the system already does and how you want it to manage the plan checking process, how you want it to calculate fees, what type of an audit trail you want it to have. Most cities allow maybe the building official to override certain rules in the system. Some cities have the audit trail actually ask, put in a reason why you're doing this override, or if you allow maybe a permit tech to do something that goes against the rules in the system, issue a permit without some information being in there, do you want it to actually ask, "What is the reason?" So, then you have an audit trail. Other cities don't want as strict of an audit trail. So, those are all the different things that we're configuring.
I'm just going to add, Mr. Mayor, this is an evolving system. I mean, this thing can be something from day one, but six months from implementation, it can be something totally different. As a city decides more custom features are necessary, we can work with GovPartner on adding those. Of course, some of those things will have a cost associated with it. One of the things I was mentioning to members of council prior to the start of this session was, as part of the development fee study that we're going to be bringing back to council in the near future, we are looking at imposing a technology enhancement fee. Part of that fee is going to be used to pay for this system, as well as future additions to the system. So, we don't necessarily have to have a complete turnkey system from the day that they implement. With all the customized reports and all the things that we would like to have, those things can come through time, and as we learn how to use the system and decide whether certain things work or don't work, or we need to add certain things, we can make those adjustments by working through GovPartner to make those adjustments. And I think most of the cities that they've contracted with do exactly that.
That's exactly how it works.
Because they know that there's an initial upfront cost, but there's no need, reason to go with everything you may need initially, when you can do this over time and make the system work for you the way you want it to work.
Do you have a date of implementation that you're looking at?
Was yesterday too late?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Felt.
Troy, I'm going to ask you these questions because I want to talk about, I, I read this, and I know Chris is excited about the permitting and all that, but I'm excited about how the community can input information and look up information that has nothing to do with building. And the scenarios that I was thinking about when I was reading this was, was, for instance, the Araby Wash situation, where had that, we had no record of any complaints or comments about what was happening in Araby. So, this, would that be the type of thing that a citizen would then put in, and then we could have tracked and said, "Well, the first time that we heard about this was on 8/1, and Joe Smith was, was responsible for answering this."
Absolutely. It'd be a database that we could search by name, by keyword. Basically, it prints out management reports, so we know from any given day or by department the types of requests that have been made, who made the request, who's handling requests, when a response was given back to the requesting, requesting party or the complainant. So, this is a very useful tool from a management perspective, so that we can understand what's going on citywide, but more importantly, it gives the community another means of talking to City Hall 24/7, so that they can make a service request, have a pothole that they've observed, a barking dog, or maybe they have a complaint. Maybe they want to request some information. The other wonderful thing, and as Gabriella was mentioning, one of the cities that she just made a presentation the other night, is the integration to your voice system. As you know, we have the Palm Springs Information Line, which is a dial-up service that you can get information about various city services, you can request a building inspection, things like that. They can integrate their web-based application into that system, so that the information that we offer via the phone can also be available via the internet. So, there's a lot of opportunity here to cross-pollinate systems, so that they talk to one another and provide the citizenry with a better means of getting information or making service requests.
Right. And the, and the other, the other question I had, I'm, I'm really excited about that part of it. But the other question I have, most of the, the real estate companies now post their listings online, and you can take a virtual tour, and I was thinking about what happened today with the Planning Commission, and, and what's happened on a number of our projects. Is there, will there be an ability for us to, for instance, we could have had Section 14 posted on this, and people could have logged on to see that, or a project, a project, the, the classic project, where they could have logged on to the site and seen the, the map of the classic project, and where the golf course is, and all of that sort of stuff? Maybe if we couldn't do a virtual tour, but just so the people could familiarize themselves with the various development projects that, that are happening.
Well, their system really is not designed to do that, but we could do that on the city's website. What we could do in conjunction with the website and their system is do instant polling, we can put an issue out there, ask a question, get instant results from the citizenry as to what they like about something, what they don't like about something. So, what their system through Request Partner allows us to do is get information back from the community on areas of interest that the city may have. We certainly can take information that we have, whether it be on projects or on issues, and post that onto the website today. That's something that we can do internally. What Request Partner and the other applications that GovPartner produces are really designed to provide a means of transacting business, or requesting information, or making service requests of City Hall.
So, using that example, we could have taken Section 14, put it on our website, and then had a corresponding questionnaire on, on, that the, that they could, they will be easy, easily go from our site, what is it, a drop-down or something?
Exactly. Click here to provide your comments on this project.
Okay.
And then staff create the specific questions. Do you want them to do radio button, yes or no, or do you want to give them, "What do you not like about this project?", and a pull-down list with the most common likes or dislikes. All of that is created by the city, and you can link those request forms, or you can link those survey forms to any document. Like I said, you can email it to people, you can post it anywhere you want on your website.
That's interesting. Thank you.
Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have this one question. Some of these applications and permits you're talking about have a retention value through the state, they have to be kept for so long, and we currently have a, a records retention system in place. Will this data be migratable to that system, and thus, you know, saving staff time for having to input the data again, so it will be?
Well, the data from the Community Development Partner software is stored on your server, so you decide how long you want to store the data. The, all of the service requests, and over in LA County, City of Lynnwood put 15,000, and, and they're not even that large of a city, in one year. We provide you an unlimited amount of storage, and we will store that information, manage it according to the direction that we get from the city. Some cities say every three years you can purge it, others say we don't ever want to purge it. And it's the same thing with the online permitting system, all of that information is saved. But that's all part of how the city wants us to manage, it's your data, your information, so the city lets us know how long they want us to retain it for them, or if they want us to put it all on a, on a CD. That's one thing some cities have done, and then we can deliver the CD to you, or you can go ahead and put that on a server here at the city. Okay.
Okay. Ms. McCullough?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that I've noticed with a lot of the city projects is, for lack of a better term, I'll call it "project creep," is that it seems that the city council starts something, and they think it's going to be $180,000, and to get it where they really want to get it, at the end of the day, it's $280,000 or $300,000. I, I, I feel strongly that part of the course of action that gave birth to the e-government idea was the Matrix, that came out of the Development Task Force. And, and I believe that Mr. Bootsloff and Mr. Reddy both have a pretty good concept of the Matrix. I know Mr. Mills does, with his 30 years' experience on the Planning Commission. He, he has, he has a really good feel for it. I would like to see that when, when this comes back to us, that we have a fixed price on that. I want to, I want to see that as part of that. I, I understand it may not be part of the $180,000. When I was watching, when the council, that, the old council approved the 180, I think the idea was that was going to be a part of it, the 180 was going to do that. I understand.
The former council?
The, the old. And, and, so I would, I would like to see that worked out and a, and a fixed cost on that. I don't want to see it's coming back saying it's going to be eight, you know, $32,000, $48,000 to get what we really wanted in the first place, when the, when I believe the 180 was authorized. So, that's where I'm going to be on this.
So, I take it you're not funding my mission to Mars? Absolutely. We will talk to GovPartner and try to scope out some of these customized fields and some of these programs that we want to do, and we'll present that as part of the overall budget proposal and contract when we bring it back to council.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Future study session docket review?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. What we'd like to do is go through the docket agenda for future study sessions. I would also note that it was requested that we have an all-day study session, and if we could schedule that tonight, and that might help us in going through and prioritizing the topics on our list.
Fine.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, to start off, one thing I would note is, the Sunrise Norte lease is very timely, and we would request that that be given a very high priority. Thank you.
Are we doing the date first, or the lease first?
Your pleasure.
I don't care. I was supposed to say, "Are we doing the date first?"
Yeah, yes, let's, let's do the date first.
The mayor keeps giving me these lightsabers, so that I can't talk.
But it's not working.
Here's a pack of gum.
Okay. All right, let's, let's look at the date. We said a Friday, is that correct? Or do you want to look at another day?
Mr. Mayor, one, one caveat to this is, since there will be a large number of items on here, in discussions with staff this morning, we do have a certain amount of lead time. So, we would ask that it would be no earlier than that second week, the first week, first or second week of February, preferably the second week.
So, you're looking at the 20th and the 27th, as opposed to the 6th and 13th?
Yes.
Yeah, we could do the 13th. We could probably do it in that time frame, but ideally, the 20th or 27th.
All right. I only have one thing on the 20th, and I can change that.
I'm not available for any of those dates.
The 6th, the 13th, or the 20th?
The 6th, I am, but that wasn't one of the options.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's right. How about the 19th? Ooh, Lord have mercy. Okay, yeah, okay, 19th. The 19th?
19th, okay with me.
19th going once?
Yeah, 13th.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Well, I've already made my comments before, that I'm not for an all-day study session, so, whether I'll be able to attend the entire session or not, I'm sure I'll be able to get it on tape and watch it maybe at a later time, but it's not, I'm not able to do that in February, March, or April.
How about April 16th, maybe?
It's fine with me.
You know, I, I think it's important that Mr. McCullough be there. Was there an objection to maybe two half-day sessions? Is that better, Mike, or is that still a problem?
It's still a problem, but it's better.
Two half-day sessions is better than one day?
And I think it might be a little, perhaps, a little more convenient for staff as well.
Breaking it up, there's certainly something to be said about probably a two four-hour sessions. I mean, an eight-hour session will be long. And we've been here now... We've been here now.
Eight hours?
Four hours and it seems like eight hours, so certainly staff would not object to two four-hour sessions.
Counsel, I will be as flexible as I can be, so. So, we're saying we're looking at a four-hour session on the 19th?
A 1:00 PM start? Would that be a 1:00 PM start? Would that be acceptable?
It's the 19th, right?
Yes.
Is the 18th also a study session?
We could do the 11th. Now, we're here on the 11th. I retract the statement.
Yes.
Or the 25th.
You mean start at 1 and then? How about the next Thursday, the 26th?
I'm gone that whole week.
Which week are you gone, Steve?
The week of the 23rd.
Oh, okay. What about the 10th, which is a regularly scheduled study session? In essence, a regularly scheduled study session on Tuesday?
That's Tuesday.
Of March, the 10th of March.
Oh, you jumped the month here.
Well, I thought the whole idea was to catch up on things. If we're going to spread them out, then we can continue doing what we're doing and eventually we'll get everything.
What about the 11th of February?
State of the city.
I went there once, Jenny. What if you backed it up the 12th and the 19th? If you did the 12th and the 19th of February, I'm talking about. Well, we're not. You got, so you get Lincoln's birthday off? That's Lincoln's birthday. Wow. How do you get a job like that?
With benefits like that, I mean, you know.
Good. The 20th? Half a day, the 19th, half a day, the 20th?
Would that make a difference to you, Mike, having the two half-days in your?
It would make a difference.
Yeah?
Yes, I can, as long as it's morning and we're out of here at noon.
Okay, half a day, afternoon on Thursday, half a day, morning on Friday. Yeah, because I have an afternoon conflict too on the 20th, so that works great for me. 9:00 AM on, or you prefer 8?
I prefer that it end at noon because I'll have to get on the road.
Then an 8:00 AM start?
Yeah.
Sorry, Jenny. We'll have coffee.
And those will both be in this venue in the large conference room? Yep.
Okay.
The ones that we're going to be handling in the next, the week after next, or is that?
Mr. Reddy, we have a study session scheduled for February 11th, so we'd need study session topics for that date. And then we could set the rest of the study session topics for the two half-day sessions. We would suggest that the Sunrise Norte be on the 11th. That is the most timely issue.
What number is that?
It's about halfway down that page. And the rest could be just on a council's priority basis.
Well, I want to see us look at that taxi cab signage.
Okay. I would request that that goes on, that that would go on the 19th or the 20th because I'm now on that subcommittee from Sunline and they've given me a lot of information to read that I won't be able to get to until after the State of the City.
This process is kind of awkward, to tell you the truth, because we all have things that we've put on this list and we'd all like to see them come up sooner rather than later. And we're all looking at the list and I, is there any way to help prioritize these as, or decisions are going to be made down, you know, down the road? Certainly, the visioning process is important, but the homeless is important. I've sort of got my favorites, but I don't want to do all of them on the 11th. I mean, I don't, it's kind of awkward.
Councilman, actually, you raise a good question. We started this process under the prior council just because there were a lot of issues and there was some question, well, who should be choosing the priority staff or council? And that's how we matriculated into this, or evolved into this situation. I'd say that we certainly couldn't do it a different way.
Are there any items here, David, that we need, that we need to deal with on a timing basis, like i.e. the transfer station? I mean, is it?
Yes, councilman, as I noted, Sunrise Norte, also the fee study for the Canyon. The bond refinancing, the Canyon fee study, Sunrise Norte lease.
Could you give the letters? Don't you have letters next year?
No. Thank you. Excuse me. I had the old one. All right, there would be number N, the Canyon fee study, O, Sunrise Norte. Tricia, you're confusing me.
Transfer station, David?
Now, the transfer station, the subcommittee has to do some, finish their work. When is the next meeting set up, Troy?
We're probably not going to be able to do much before the middle of February, so that may actually be something that fall into the two half-day sessions.
Or the regular.
The regular study session that's scheduled for the 25th.
Is there some kind of, on the secondary units, is there some urgency to that? Doug might know. Are we getting a major influx of those, or?
I think the prime urgency there is that our current ordinance and the state law don't mesh up quite right. We're not getting an influx of those. We're, you know, we processed the permits for secondary units or granny flats or whatever the public might refer to them as fairly quickly and the planning commission's approved every one, so, you know, we have a pretty good process, but the processing isn't quite jiving with state law and, you know, it would be nice to have some direction from council as to what you want to do. And then the city attorney and planning staff can craft the ordinance.
Okay.
All right. I guess, Counsel, do you see anything that you would like to see prioritize at this point? Or would you be comfortable with staff bringing us back the recommendations for those dates?
Well, I think that there's, are certain things that are timely, even though they're not things that we need to. I think the continuation of the Budget Task Force discussion is, because we're going to be, we're doing budgeting, so I think that's something that we should prioritize. And a lot of these things may have to do with what's going to happen. The community visioning process is going to be a lengthy process and I think that if we're going to do that, we really need to discuss some, what our format is going to be for that.
Okay. How, what is the community visioning process?
When we were talking about visioning, we're creating a vision for the city and we talked about there would be an involvement of all of the stakeholders in the city. And so, we would be setting, we would be establishing some process to create the vision for the city.
Is that not what they're doing with the general plan?
No, I don't see it as, I see it different than the general plan.
I see Q, R, S, and T, all as pretty important issues. The timing of them, I'm not sure.
Oh, yes.
Okay, but all four of those. I think those are four that we all talked about.
Yeah.
At the Riviera that one day. So, I don't know how they're prioritized in the timeline, but I see them as fairly important. Is the CAT D Claw ordinance a priority right now, Mr. Reddy?
It may not be. I think I have a sense of about seven that would be, would work well for the next three meetings. So, I'll come up with a draft agenda for the next three meetings, get it out to council in the next couple of days, and I would welcome your comments.
I have one other question and then I really will shut up. No, no more. I had requested that we establish a legislative committee. Is that something that needs to go on the study session or is that something we're going to?
That would be a study session, I believe that is listed.
Item U.
It's item U. On the study session docket, it's item U.
Well, we want to do that by just mayor designation as a liaison.
That could very well be done on the legislative calendar as well.
Okay. Well, because I think that the legislation committee is, I have offered to take responsibility for that, but I also would like to get some citizens involved in it. And while we're on that subject, I was speaking to our city clerk earlier and whoever is still awake and watching needs to know that we are not receiving the kinds of response to her wonderful advertising for all the commission positions, so I would suggest that everybody go online and you can apply for a commission right there. But the legislation committee, I also would like to get some people from the community to also assist. So, I mean, I don't know if we need to formalize that or I can just go ahead and do it.
I think you can do it.
Fine.
And, yes? You know, I don't see, I mean, maybe there aren't a lot of people who have responded as of yet, but I know that there's a lot of discussion about participation in boards and commissions, so maybe they haven't decided what to apply for as of yet, but I think you'll get a good response. I think you'll be overwhelmed.
If not, perhaps we'll get you on the radio or something there, Ms. Sanders?
Would you give the dates, please?
The applications are available now and the deadline is March 31st.
Counsel, are there any other questions? I would just like to say that the City of Palm Springs Office of Neighborhood Involvement and Public Participation will hold an open house. The open house will be held here in the large conference room on Thursday, February 5th from 3:00 PM until 5:00 PM. Certainly, if there are people who want to stay a little longer, I'm sure staff will accommodate. But the purpose of this will be to discuss the issues of, that have come up concerning Section 14. There will be displays, there will be representatives from the tribal planning office as well as the city to speak to our citizens one-on-one, to discuss their issues and concerns, and to answer questions. So, people who are interested, please remember that date, Thursday, February 5th, 2004, 3:00 PM here in the large conference room. And, you know, this is our way of responding, giving people an opportunity to ask the questions directly and to hear their concerns. And with that, we will call this meeting adjourned. Good night.